All right, welcome everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular city council meeting on Tuesday, November 27, 2018. We're located at the Veterans Memorial Hall and our meeting is starting at 6:00 PM. For those that are viewing at home, welcome. And for the record, we do have a quorum. All members of council are present and we'll call the meeting to order. And with that, if we can start our meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. And if you'll all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. On to the next agenda item. We don't have any recognitions at this time for tonight. Closed session report. We have no report of actions from closed session. And Mayor, council members' reports and announcements. Marloes, you want to start us off tonight?
Sure. I wanted to just announce that Scott Collins and I met with Laurel Weir, who is in charge of homeless services for the county. And I will be reporting on the results of that in an item that's on our agenda. So I will not say anything more about it now. And of course, I am looking forward to our recognition event on Monday, which is for all of our advisory boards. And so that, we're looking forward to that. Thanks.
Thanks, Marloes. John?
Oh, good. Thank you. Good evening. Don't want to steal this fire chief knuckles here? Good. That won't steal this thunder. This, excuse me, not this Friday, Monday, December 3rd. That's Monday, December 3rd at 4:30 PM at the fire station. KSBY-TV will be there filming. We're going to participate in our Season of Hope program that provides unwrapped toys and non-perishable food to the most needy families and children in Estero Bay. The city is teaming up with KSBY-TV, the local food banks, toy agencies, fire departments, and the California Highway Patrol to put together the largest community-wide food and toy drive on the central coast. So if you have the opportunity to bring non-perishable food to donate and/or unwrapped toys, it would be appropriate. You could really bring some joy to some needy families in our community and in the Estero Bay area. That's December the 3rd, Monday, 4:30 PM at the fire station. And I want to invite the community to that. As well, we'll have our annual Christmas tree lighting, the 30th of November, that is this Friday, 3:30 to 6:00 PM. Not just the lighting of the tree. It doesn't take two and a half hours to do that. But there is a program that we'll have with refreshments. I believe Santa Claus will be arriving about midway, telling stories. We'll have the high school choral group singing Christmas carols. It's always a fun time at City Park, 3:30 to 6:00 PM this Friday at the community City Park. Thank you.
Okay, Matt?
No announcements.
Okay, Brad?
Yes. Gail and I were in Fresno Saturday, and we ran into the Morro Bay High School Girls Cross Country Team there at Woodward Park. They were competing in the CIF State Cross Country Championships. And I think every city in California was represented there, including one runner from Paradise. Morro Bay had seven runners in the Division III girls. So I want to say congratulations to Audrey Mclish, Maya Burton, Adrian Frere, Mylani McKelvey, Peyton Schimmer, Kenley Flaherty, and Annalise Dempsey. They didn't finish first, and they didn't finish last, but they qualified and they competed at the state level. And we can be proud of all of them. And also, if I can add to Mayor-elect Hettings' announcement, note from Karen Sweeney at Recreation Services. If you cannot make it to the fire station for the Season of Hope on Monday, you can also drop by the swimming pool on Sunday, December 2nd between 1:00 and 4:00. Recreation Services will be hosting a toy and food drive during our last recreational swim of 2018. Bring a new toy and receive free admission to the pool, or bring non-perishable food items and receive a dollar off. We will also be gathering toys and food through December 7th at the pool during our lap swim hours. All toys and food collected will be donated through the Season of Hope program, and it may be Santa Claus will be visiting the pool on Sunday.
Okay, great. And with that, there are speaker slips on the table in the back for those who'd like to speak at public comment. We have general public comment coming up next. Then we have public comment for consent and public comment for all of our business items. And with that, and we have a lighted boat parade that's December 1st.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. And rain or shine?
At this point, it's still on. If the winds reach a certain level, it will be unsafe for boats. So that will be up to the harbor director to cancel Christmas or not.
Do we have Scrooge?
If, in fact, we have to, we'd postpone it to the next weekend. But at this point, it's looking like it's good, but Eric may have more of an update.
Okay.
I think we'll have a, thank you, good evening, Mayor Irons and council. I think we'll have a little better idea tomorrow morning. We're still a little far out in the forecast-wise to get a good handle of those different models and different forecasters that are not quite jiving. It looks like the rain will be over by the evening, but winds may be a factor. So hopefully tomorrow, we'll be able to make more of a decision because we want to give everybody as much lead time as possible. But it's the weather, so.
Okay. All right, thanks. And before we go into public comment or anything else, I just wanted to get consensus from council to move our future agenda item up to the first business item, first course of business, following public comment. Future, the future agenda item?
Oh, sure.
We just moved future agenda items to the very first order of business, following public comment? Do we have consensus on that? No? It's okay, we got a consensus on that. Okay, we'll do that, and then we'll shift back into the regular course of business. And then, so that concludes our announcements. Any other announcements from staff? None? Okay, we'll move on to public comment, and we'll open up with our business spots. We have Gio DeGherimore, sorry, Gio. If you'd come up and welcome, you're going to do our business spot tonight and tell us about your longtime business, and welcome.
I will. Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor Irons, council, staff, and distinguished guests. For those of you who I have not yet had the pleasure of meeting, my name is Giovanni DeGherimore. I am a second-generation fishmonger here in Morro Bay. My father was Mike DeGherimore. He was a commercial abalone diver for 17 years, and he worked out of Morro Bay. He also started one of the first commercial seafood distributors here in 1973 called Central Coast Seafoods, which was acquired by Santa Monica Seafoods, who rent some space on a north dock there. And we also started the Finicky Fish Number Two, also known as the boat-shaped building that recently left Morro Bay, which was sad to see go, but things change and time goes So now, what do I do? I run Giovanni's Fish Market here in Morro Bay, amongst other things, and we buy and sell fish from the local fishermen, provide great fish and chips and clam chowder to the tourists that visit and the locals as well. I also run the Fuel Dock here and Marina down, located by Giovanni's, where we provide unloading services, as well as fueling and other services for the commercial fishing fleet here. We've done that since 1985. And most recently, about eight years ago, I opened a little wine bar down the street called Stacks. So a little bit of everything. I've been here my whole life, kind of growing up on these docks, fishing off the docks and eating San Luis sourdough with some smoked fish, and I guess I just never left. So I'm still here doing what I did and following in my father's footsteps, and I actually couldn't be more proud to do it and look forward many more years to come and hopefully some new projects here in Morro Bay. And beyond that, I like photography, scuba diving, and long walks on the beach. And that's about all.
Thanks, Gio.
Thanks for having me.
All right, you betcha. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay. And with that, as we move on to public comment, I have two speaker slips for public comment and one for Item C3 for someone who can't stay for an item later on in the agenda. So I'll just remind folks, if you can't stay for an item later on in the agenda and you want to speak to that item now, please, if you can submit your public speaker slip, that'd be great. So first up for public comment, Chuck Stoll.
Good evening, Mayor Irons and council. My name is Chuck Stoll. I'm a resident here in Morro Bay, have been for a few years, and I'm proud to say that I'm also active in a number of different civic organizations in town. And I'm just very proud to be part of, part of the community and part of all the things that are happening, the positive things that are happening in this community, one of which is our community dinner on Monday nights. I don't know how many of you are aware, well, I know that you're all aware, of the commitment that the city has made to use this facility, and we do that every Monday night. We serve dinners to nearly 100 people every Monday night, many of which, many of those people are homeless, as you're probably well aware. Our fearless leader of that is Linda Fidel. She's sitting in the front row. I imagine she has some comments tonight as well, maybe on C3. But the success of this Monday night, of course, is due to dozens and dozens of volunteers and, of course, organizations. I think we now have six or seven different organizations. Some of those are faith-based, some of them are just independents, Lions Club, just, you know, lots of different people participate. We are responsible for different menus. We get to pick our own. Some are a little unusual, perhaps, especially when I have to do something at the last minute. But I'm here mainly tonight to address this issue of the homeless and the C3, and I do have to leave a little bit early, so that's why I, speaking in public comment, declaring a homeless shelter crisis. And I think this is a really important issue. I think it's an important issue throughout the whole country. And I think that our city is prepared now. I think we have lots of people who are aware, citizens, residents, that are aware of this issue and how important it is that we develop a warming shelter. I know that I've talked to several of you on the city council in the past. Two years ago, Linda Fidel and myself made an effort to kick this thing off, and in the process of doing that, we really obtained quite a bit of data from, from a number of different places. But one of the main sources was that of Paso Saves. I don't know if you're familiar, or Paso Cares, I'm sorry. And I don't know if you're familiar with that organization, but it is really a thriving organization that really helps a lot of people. So from our extensive, really, ooh, that was my two minutes? Anyway, through our studies, Linda and I wrote down and developed quite a bit of information that we'd like to share with you.
Thanks.
And I think that you'd have it. I should have put down three minutes.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Next time.
All right, thanks, Chuck. Thank you. Next up is Linda Fidel.
My name is Linda Fidel, and I'm a resident of Morro Bay. And through my connection with the community dinners, I am well aware that there is a crisis of shelter in Morro Bay and elsewhere. When the rain starts tomorrow morning, I will be minorly inconvenienced by it, most likely. There are people who will have to endure it outdoors for the whole time. And I'm hoping that we are able to do better than that for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. That's all I have for a regular public comment period. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thanks for all that. We'll save those remarks for Item C3 as we move on to that. And, okay, so following public comment, first up, we're going to move to future agenda items. Future agenda items, any future agenda items that we'd want to discuss?
Yes, thank you. As we, as I made remarks at the last meeting, and we ended at 11 o'clock and didn't have a chance to do future agenda items, I'll reread the future agenda item I'm requesting. And basically, it says exactly what I said last time. With the election results now known, I think it's imperative as community leaders that we begin to unite and move forward together on our important WRF project and all other city matters. In light of that, I'm asking my fellow council members to consider adding an agenda item to discuss whether to direct staff to formally verify and tabulate all of the ballots the city received prior to the end of the WRF 218 public hearing. My suggestion is not to reopen whether there were sufficient valid protests against the 218 surcharges. That determination has been made with certainty and based on the publicly available criteria provided in Resolution 44-18, which concluded that a sufficient number of valid ballots had not been returned. Even with that, my hope is that by actually verifying and tabulating the valid number of protests, that this will lay to rest any community consternation for all of those who appropriately expressed an opinion about the WRF surcharges and have not been heard. And again, in going around and knocking on a lot of doors during this election season, I too heard that from a number of public members. During that verification and tabulation, staff could use all of the criteria established by Resolution 44-18, except the need for a protest to include a date after July 13th, 2018, which is in the date that the city's public notice had commencing the WRF 218 protest period. As part of a discussion item for the next council meeting, I'm also seeking the council to decide whether the presently seated council, to be seated, or the council to be seated in early December would be the one to provide that direction, to provide the maximum latitude for the current council's discussion regarding this matter. This evening, I'm seeking a consensus from at least two other of my colleagues to add this agenda item to the next council meeting to discuss the above issue that I have just outlined in detail for you, to be completed by the clerk according to a timeline established by the city manager. So that would be my request, to agendize that and have that discussed in the next meeting.
I concur. We have a concurrence?
I absolutely concur. I actually wanted to do this when we passed the initial resolution. I believe it's really important that we validate the ballots and for the sake of transparency and so the community knows how many households, or parcels, if you wish, actually opposed the 218. So I think it's important, and yes, I support the validation process.
Matt, you support it? Okay, good. I would support as well. John, I just want, I know you read through a lengthy description, but to be clear, we're asking, you're asking with council consensus, which we've agreed to, to formalize and itemize the protest votes. I just want to understand, are we going to be validating those? Or are we just going to, I want to be specific, or at least understand the difference.
And I'll just, I was very careful to have it written out, and I'll read it again exactly. I'm asking the council members to consider adding to the upcoming council agenda an item to discuss whether to direct staff to formally verify and tabulate all of the ballots the city received prior to the end of the WRF 218 public hearing. And again, not to reopen whether there were sufficient valid protests against the 218 surcharges, but simply to verify and tabulate the ballots.
Okay. So, okay, that'd be great. So the discussion would determine to what detail?
Correct.
All right, good. Are we okay, Scott?
Yeah, we'd be prepared to bring that to the special meeting scheduled for this Thursday.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have consensus on that future agenda item, as stated, and there's no motion or anything. We've got consensus on that. Was there another future agenda item?
I actually have three. Right. The first being that the council really does need to address the marijuana tax issue now that it has passed. The citizens have said we are allowed to tax marijuana, but we have not established the tax. And we will soon have two dispensaries opening, and so I think we need to agendize and actually pass a tax. So that's number one.
Any, is there consensus on that? We've got support? Okay, we've got unanimous support on that, Dana? Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
And then, another request actually has to do with Item C3, and I will explain it at the time. But if we are going to apply for the funding that's available, it has to be done by December 31st. And we have very little time for the council to take action on that, so I would like, if we decide to move forward, and we don't know yet if that's going to be feasible, but if we decide to move forward with a grant application for that money, to agendize it at the December 11th meeting so that a council could actually at least approve the concept of what we're applying for.
So based on that item being discussed, we want to just hold that and then we can discuss future agenda item with that?
We can't, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And then my, that's fine. My third item concerns, since we are now at kind of a critical juncture in the WRF project, we have previously discussed actually separating the functions of the WRF CAC and the CFAC so that financial aspects of the WRF project would be brought before the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and the WRF CAC would be dealing with the technical issues. This was something that was suggested last spring, but we never took action on it. And since we are now at sort of a, the end of one phase and beginning a third phase in the WRF project, it seems appropriate for the council to discuss whether or not we would like to do that. So that's my third.
Okay. Is there consensus for that? So I'd support that as well for discussion. And, yeah, okay. And so Dana, we've got council member Hettings' item for the protest votes. We've got the marijuana tax issue, as Marloes discussed, and the separating functions of the WRF CAC and CFAC. All those supported unanimously. And the homeless one, we can, following that, we can, you know, that discussion, we might be able to have that discussion a little bit more informatively. Okay. So Marloes, don't, we'll make sure we get that. Were there any other future agenda items? And thanks for considering that, since we kind of, we didn't get to that last item. I thought maybe we should just go ahead and jump into it first thing. All right. With that concluded, we'll move on to consent. And for consent, I'd like to pull Item A5. Anything else for anybody else? Any other items to pull?
I just want to mention that I brought up to our city manager this afternoon in looking at, I believe it's Item A6, the resolution for a semi-annual evaluation included an older form, evaluation form. So we now have the corrected form, but it's a three-point scale, 1, 3, 5, not four points. So just.
So with those, those corrections?
Yes. Those changes have been made, but I just wanted to make sure it's in the minutes.
So Chris, would we make, would the motion be to adopt A6 with stated corrections? Or are we good to go with that?
I think that the motion would be to do just that, which is that we are going to take the substituted amended Item A6 evaluation form. And to keep it real simple, on Item A6, the changes that are being made, for the record, are just simply on page 28 of page 125 in the agenda. Up at the top on instructions, where there is a ranking, 4, 5, 3, 2, 1, it's going to be substituted to have a ranking of 5, 3, and 1. And then underneath that, when it says any item left blank, we interpret it as a score of equals 3, which would be meet standard. And then a 5 is exceed standard, 3 is meet standard, and 1 is needs improvement. And then also, would be making a change on the page 9 of 9 in the evaluation report 2 for the narrative evaluation. And the further details are actually in what is now in the record. So if there's a motion for that, then we could just make that change for A6.
Okay. So with that clarification, I take a motion to approve Item A6 per the discussion?
I move we approve Item A6 as amended.
Second?
Motion by Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Hettings. Any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. And then I take a motion to approve Items A1, 2, 3, 4, and 7.
So moved?
Motion by Mr. Hettings, second by Mr. Mackwetzke. Further discussion? Aye? None? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And then, Item A5, there were, I just wanted to read into the record some suggested changes, and with council approval, we could discuss whether or not this is, these ads would be something we would want to consider. On Resolution Number 9218, I drafted an additional whereas. So it would be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. There'd be an additional whereas, number 8, and it would be stated as follows. Whereas the city passed a water and wastewater surcharge rate on September 11th, 2018 for the purpose of building a new water reclamation facility. That act, along with previously imposed water and wastewater rate increases approved in 2015, will provide for the ongoing maintenance of the city's water and wastewater conveyance systems through 2040. The average annual funds allotted for water infrastructure is $1,357,600. And wastewater is, collection system is $1,19,200 over years 1 through 5 of the One Water Morro Bay Capital Improvement Program. That's the added whereas. And the other section I would ask to consider adding is under the "now therefore be it resolved" under Section 2, and change that to read as follows. Staff is directed to take the following actions regarding the implementation of the plan's 20-year capital improvement program. Bring to council a five-year CIP for water, wastewater, and stormwater for consideration and adoption with FY 1920 budget, and begin the process for successive five-year CIPs for water, wastewater, and stormwater to fulfill the 20-year CIP. And those are the added changes. Any, any discussion or consideration?
Yeah, I think that's, the second part is consistent with our discussion at the last meeting, and I would just ask, and I'm sure you've done that, that we validated the numbers in the first part in the whereas with our finance director, and that those are correct numbers. I'm sure that you've done that.
Yeah, and those, those numbers were inputted by staff and getting concurrence with Mr. Collins?
Great.
Are we good there? Scott and Jen? Are we okay with that?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Heading, Dr. Heading, and second by Mr. Makwetki. Sorry, couldn't get that one. Any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. All right, thank you. Thank you, that. That concludes our consent. And let me just catch up on a couple of things here. Okay. All right, next item. Item C1. And Rob, you going to introduce this item?
Okay. Thanks, Mayor, Council, Scott Collins, City Manager. And we're here to discuss approval of an amendment to the contract with Corolla Engineers for the program management for the WRF project. As council is aware, about this time last year, maybe earlier, earlier in the year, there was discussion in a larger WRF item about looking at the program management structure and understanding if there were efficiencies to be gained and maybe potentially a benefit from having fresh eyes on, on the program writ large. Staff brought a recommended change of the overall management structure to the WRF CAC, I believe in January of 2018. It's almost been an entire year. And they made, suggested recommendations that were different from staff, ultimately pointing to, you know, not using existing resources, but looking to bring in a whole, basically a whole new fresh shed of eyes to lead the project and to provide oversight, to provide program management, and to really take a deep dive in how things are working and seek ways to save money, ensure that we're getting the best value for the community. Those recommendations were carried forward to city council. Council directed staff to pursue hiring a new program manager with pretty much infinite flexibility in terms of what that would look like, but ultimately kind of carrying forward the recommendations of WRF CAC to bring in a new set of, a fresh set of eyes. And so staff pursued an RFP approach, understanding that bringing in a single individual as a salaried employee probably run into the same situation we run into, that it's just too, too much to ask of one person to provide the oversight, to understand the particularities of a design-build contract, to understand the permitting requirements, environmental, et cetera, and to do that effectively. And so we pursued the contracting route, but following our own prescribed methodologies about how we contract at that amount, we did a full RFP process. We did have some assistance from a community member, Mr. Heller, which we very much appreciated. We also did have participation from the WRF CAC Subcommittee that's also assisted on the review of the design-build proposals. Those three sat in on review of proposals, which submitted, ultimately we did receive two. And they also were on the interview panel for the candidates, as well as two council members. Ultimately, staff provided a recommendation to city council for the selection of Corolla Engineers. It should be noted that the input from the community and the input from the WRF CAC Subcommittee was different than the recommendation that I brought forward, but it was still very much appreciated to get that perspective. Ultimately, somebody has to make that recommendation. One person has to think about kind of the whole and what's going to be most beneficial long-term. And it was, was a tough decision. The other candidate was very highly qualified, certainly brought a lot of skill sets to the table, but ultimately, the recommendation from the city manager was based upon having a team approach, having the expertise that Corolla has in design-build and permitting new, kind of new innovation, new innovative projects like IPR. And city council did move forward with that recommendation in April of 2018. In doing so, there was sort of a, a large overview of the entire contract, I think you want to, that looked at the entire duration of the project from where we are when we took on the contract through the completion of, of the WRF project itself. So the estimated total of that amount was about $7.7 million that was shared with council and the community in the staff report. But the initial authorization was only for Phase 1, which was really kind of doing a deep analysis of how things are working, how we integrate with the existing team, if there are any technical issues, how we're going to proceed forward with the design-build, you know, community outreach and those kind of things were all set up in the first. So council only approved that initial amount for Phase 1. And the list of services are right there before you. So before I go, get too, too much further afield, I'll probably turn it over to, to Rob. But you, you get a sense of Corolla was selected because of their expertise, because of their ability to have a team approach, that not one person's going to fulfill all those roles. And we feel, from my vantage point, feel like we made the right decision based upon where we sit currently. The project sat at $167 million, is now $126. The estimated rate increase was around $100 per month, it's now $41 per month. And yes, a lot of folks played key roles in that, including the community members, some of who are here today, city council and staff. But a lot of the thanks goes to Corolla for, for their mastery in terms of program management and making sure that we get the best value from this project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rob to discuss further what's been accomplished to date and what's coming up with Phase 2.
Thank you, Scott. When we first received a proposal from Corolla, they broke the work up into three phases. The first phase was this last April through this coming December. And it was really the program confirmation phase and to get moving forward with procuring the design-build team. This next phase, what we're asking for authorization for right now is the program implementation. We're moving on to some funding support, permitting on the actual facility, controls, which are not the, the dials that you turn on the plant, but controls in, in as much as controlling project costs and schedule, providing updates on a regular basis, and providing that technical design oversight that our design-build team is beginning to work on right now. The final phase is, again, provides some funding support and permitting, continues on with program controls, but the, the vast majority of the work effort will occur out in the field in the construction management side of it as we move forward to building the project. I'm going to update a little bit on Phase, Phase 1. And Phase 1 really was the, their first task, the assessment, technical valuation, procurement of the design-build team, developing the controls plan, program team integration with the, the existing team, and some update meetings. I have to sync my over-the-shoulder screen changing, I guess. Program assessment, the program is on track. The, they, Corolla assessed the technical, the procurement procedures, find where we're at financially, regulatory and permitting, and provided outreach. And the conclusion is, an overall assessment of the program and what degree the city is on track towards meeting its goals. And the city is on track for meeting its goals. Technical valuation, looked at the drinking water requirements, treatment requirements, environmental requirements, and a conveyance facility review. The, we are on track, and this is, the existing program is meeting these key factors. In fact, the next step in this process is the conveyance facility review, and we'll see that coming to a special WRF CAC meeting on the 17th of December. Design-build procurement support. The former program manager started this. Corolla followed up with technical evaluation of the proposal, RFP documents, and the proposal, looked at the financials, developed a strategy for ranking those proposals, helped with the selection and the contract negotiations. And we completed that, and council took action on that last month. The program controls plan, this is really a, a transition from a, a program that we licensed called Procore for about $40,000 a year to using a platform that the city already has licenses for, the Microsoft Office SharePoint process. And it has built-in workflows, has document management, document tracking, scheduling. So we're using those existing features the city already owns and building upon those. These not only will work for this project or this program, but will help the city in its future, document tracking, invoice processing. It provides workflow for those things. And I know that we're all looking forward to using this on routing our agenda reports so that we have a, a better way to deliver those. And the program team integration. This was the program team when Corolla came on board. Michael K. Nunlelin Associates, ESA, the EIR consultant, Far Western, the archaeological consultant, Kestrel Consulting provides assistance on financing, grant preparation, Bartle Wells, our rate consultant, RM Design Group, outreach, and Ferguson Group, governmental relations are the lobbyists that helped us in DC. So of this team, MKN is no longer providing any assistance to the city. ESA completed their environmental work, but will be assisting in the integration of their environmental document into the federal process. So they're assisting in the WFI review. Far Western is still providing archaeological work as we move forward. Kestrel Consulting is assisting with the state revolving fund applications. And we just learned from SRF, the State Board, that our application is complete, and they'll be starting the scoring on that in January. Bartle Wells completed the rate study. RM Group is no longer assisting us on public outreach. And we still have Mike Miller with the Ferguson Group assisting us in DC. The, during this initial phases, the program manager made routine updates, city council, WRF CAC, Planning Commission, and CFAC. CFAC was involved in the, the rate analysis. WRF CAC was involved in some of the technical analysis and the rates. And Planning Commission looked at the environmental review, and city council looked at everything. Move on to really the, the phase that we're looking to authorize with this contract amendment, which is Phase 2. Initially estimated at $2.4 million. And Corolla's team updated their estimates, and that cost is now estimated to be a little over $1.6 million for that. Probably not a complete savings. Some of those items have moved into Phase 3. So, but this, remember, this is a time and materials contract. And should we not need, for example, as rigorous a public outreach, we can use less of that money with any of these items. They're all time and materials items. And if we don't need their support, we won't spend that money and incur those costs. Summary on the project budget. Last July, city council authorized a fiscal year 1819, $9.4 million budget for the WRF program. We've spent about $250,000 to date. That's probably not including some invoices that haven't been approved and processed. So this was as of our accounting softwares to date. The WRF program overall from 2013 to date, we spent about $5.8 million. As I said, the program management expenses for Phase 2 is $1.6 million. All of these numbers are covered in the $126 million program budget that was used as input into the rate. So it's all in, all in for the rates. Tonight, we're looking for the council to authorize the Public Works Director to sign an amendment to the existing contract with Corolla Engineers. That original contract was approved April 11th, 2018, for the program management of the water reclamation facility in the sum of $1,606,948. That concludes our presentation. And we have Eric Casares from Corolla here in the audience to assist with answering questions that the council might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Rob, for that. We'll open up with questions from council. Following that, we'll go to public comment and come back for deliberation. Marlo, do you want to start us off?
Sure. Well, I had the opportunity to sit down this afternoon and get some of my questions answered. And I was pleased to see that some of the answers were in the presentation, so I don't have to ask the questions. Can you explain to me, and this is a detail in the, in the contract itself, the purpose of the pre-workshop interviews and the kickoff meeting? I was just a bit confused. As I understand it, it's not a public meeting. This is more for all of the various people involved technically to get together. But if you could just add a little more information about that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. That's a me, oh, I'll let Eric explain it. He explains it much more eloquently than I can, anyway.
Mayor, Council, Eric Casares with Corolla Engineers, the WRF project manager, or program manager, excuse me. Yeah, so the partnering meeting that we have on there, the term workshop is, I guess, a little bit of a misnomer. It's really an opportunity for, while we've kicked off the design-build process, we've got the design builder under contract, and we're working with them on it in a technical way. Really, this is an opportunity for key city staff, members of the program team, not only ones that are members of the design-build team, but other, other folks like the designer for the conveyance facilities. We can all get together in a room. We have a independent facilitator where we discuss the goals for the project and the ways that we're going to work together to be able to achieve those goals. So there is a bit of a technical slant to it, but maybe not as technical as a lot of the workshops that we do. It is a little bit more of a, a little bit of a team-building exercise where, again, we talk about expectations and, and just making sure that we have the right structure put together that we can work effectively together. Because there is a lot of coordination, obviously, between the different individuals.
And in your experience with these kinds of projects, do those kinds of issues come up where there's disagreements? And just, is, is, give me an example of, of what might come up that would be an issue that you have to negotiate or...
Sure. Well, it's interesting because I guess in a, in a conventional kind of design-bid-build project, you typically have kind of one engineering entity that's designing something to, and it's completed. It goes and it gets bid, it gets put out on the street. The contractor bids on that project, then builds the project. With the design-build projects, it's a little bit different because we, you do have a program manager that's involved, and then you have a, and you also have a design-build end- manager that's involved and then you also have a design-build entity. So as the program manager, we have obviously have design experience and so we have a say and we're looking over the shoulder of the design builder and what they're doing. We also have to be aware in coordinating the various—because this is a program, it's a collection of several different projects—we also have to do coordination between the different projects. So there's a lot of engineers that are involved, kind of us on an oversight role and then individual design engineers. So things can come up where we may think that something should be done a certain way and the design builder thinks that something should be done a certain way. Part of the goal of the partnering meeting will be to discuss when those issues arise and there is a bit of a disagreement, kind of what's the process for resolving that at the end of the day?
And can you tell me the current status of the lift station pipeline design, where that's at, when that might be finished? And then also the GSI Water Systems Project for the injection wells? So just where do we stand on those two kind of subcomponents of the project?
Great. So for the conveyance facilities, so the lift stations and the pipelines, the design engineer for that component of the project, they actually just submitted their conceptual design report. It's about their 30% design report to us last Monday on the 21st. So we're reviewing that document internally. We have a workshop with them scheduled next week on December 6th to review that document in detail. And then we have a WRFCAC meeting scheduled, tentatively scheduled for December 17th where us and the design engineer will be presenting the overview of that conceptual design report.
Okay. And the GSI Water Systems?
Yeah, so GSI is also under contract. They've started—they have several phases. If you remember, they have several phases of their work or several components. The initial component, which we're obviously very interested in, which is getting some more detail on exactly where the best location for the injection wells and how those injection wells will be operated in conjunction with the extraction wells. They've started that modeling effort already, so they've already received notice to proceed. They've been working for about three or four weeks. Us and staff have been working to get together some information that they need to keep their project going or their work going. And we actually have a formal kickoff meeting with them scheduled for next Wednesday, December 5th.
Okay. So both of those projects would be completed during this contract amendment phase that we're currently—is before us tonight?
Yeah, so the majority of GSI's work, of the hydrogeologist's work on the injection wells, the modeling work's going to be done to answer some of those critical questions. But there's some long-term work that they need to do in terms of the installation of some test wells and everything else. That's going to extend out for the next—I think it's past the next fiscal year. For the majority of the work that is being done on the conveyance facilities, the schedule currently has that design being completed sometime in late summer of next year with the project going out to bid and construction starting, I believe sometime in fall of—late fall of next year.
Okay. And when would you anticipate that actual construction of the plant itself might begin?
Sure. So again, because it's a design-build project that we're doing out there at the South Bay Boulevard site, it's a little bit different than getting a large stack of drawings completed. It goes—it gets bid and then the contractor starts work and then they continue on. This is a little bit more of a phased process. And so the first thing that the design builder's going to be developing is a set of grading, a grading plan set, and they'll start doing some earthwork out on the site as they're moving the design forward on some of the other elements, the structural and mechanical elements. That work is likely going to start. It's going to start after the initial permitting work is done and we can get a grading permit through the county. But that work is going to start next summer. So we should be moving dirt next summer.
And you would expect, then, by that point in time, we will have the funding sources pretty well nailed down? Because I'm assuming we're not moving forward on construction until we've got all the funding elements in place.
That's correct. WFI and SRF are pretty adamant in terms of if you want something to be— if you want something to be reimbursed specifically on construction, it can't start until after those funding agreements are in place.
Right. And I know in looking through the contract, there was some confusion in my mind about what was being proposed for this fiscal year versus the project phase, which runs through December 31 of next year. Could you just explain kind of your rationale for doing it that way?
Sure.
If you could.
Yeah, these things can be kind of inherently messy when you're dealing with timelines that don't necessarily mesh up exactly. So when we first developed the contract back in April of last year, the idea is that we had a very good idea of what our role and what we were going to be doing for about the six to eight-month period. And so we wanted to put together a really detailed scope of work and budget for that. But then the idea would be that we would come back for each—at each fiscal—before the beginning of each fiscal year and negotiate and amend the contract for that fiscal year. But as I mentioned, unfortunately, the phases don't necessarily line up in that way. So things that we can very easily—we can very easily put a timeline to, things like the program controls, where we have a number of meetings, a number of progress reports that we're putting together. Those are the kinds of things that line up more with the fiscal year. And then the things that are more of the continuum, so the permitting services, for example, specifically for the potable reuse permitting. We have a strategy that we're going to be executing, but that strategy may change. And so we think that we're going to get to a certain place by the end of this fiscal year. Chances are that we may not get there or we may get further than we thought. And so we've tried to—for some of those items, we've tried to increase the duration of those. So the permitting, both for the potable reuse permitting and also for the land use permitting, is kind of for the—all of the work. So, for example, the potable reuse permitting, what's in this scope of work will likely not need to be amended or augmented for the duration of the program out until 2022. So that's kind of fully funded in there. And as we come back with our monthly reports and as we come back for our next budget amendment, hopefully be able to make that a little bit more clear.
Right. And the management system, the PMS that you're using, PMIS, that also is tracking costs, correct? So that we have a very accurate, up-to-date of exactly how much money has been spent on each element in the budget?
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll be tracking everything in terms of this cost and budget to the $126 million current budget.
Right. And I think Rob said it, but just to reiterate again, if you don't need to spend as much money as you may have thought you were going to on, let's say, the public participation or public outreach, you won't spend it. I mean, it's time and materials. So if at some point you decide it's not necessary to spend that money, it's there and it can be used for something else.
That's correct. So a good example of that is the work that we did for Phase One. So one of the first scope items that we had up there was the kind of the program assessment. And we learned pretty quickly when we came onboard, did a review of the RFP, an end-up review of the RFP, and looked at some other aspects of the project, like the conveyance facilities and everything else. We got a good sense pretty quickly that everything was pretty much on track and that we were going to be able to use that RFP to bring the design builder onboard and move that process forward. So there was a lot of kind of "out of" quote-unquote "out of scope" work that we were able to do with that existing budget that was in there. So, you know, it doesn't—there weren't things about support of the rate process that were in there and attending a lot of the meetings associated with that in there. But because we didn't need all of our budget on the program assessment, we were able to use that to support those tasks.
And my last question. Can you explain the need for the public outreach team? And I know I had some concerns because it seems like this phase is a very technical phase. You're doing all the permitting and satisfying all these requirements of all these various governmental agencies, which wouldn't necessarily require public outreach. But give me some examples of things that might come up where you would want to have a public outreach team?
Sure. I think there's two big examples on this program at this time. So we've gone through the first phase and previous phases of the program to get us to where we are today. I think the two items that could surface, and I've seen surface with other projects, would be because it's a recycled water project, specifically because it's a potable reuse project, there may be the need to do some outreach in terms of the safety of potable reuse and educating the public that may not know what's going on, what potable reuse is, what the regulations are, and how the city's conforming with those regulations to ensure public health. So that's one item where we see the need. The other item is in terms of any issues with construction. So the needs for partial road closures and traffic, rerouting traffic, those kinds of things, that would be the other function of the public outreach, is to make sure that those items are coordinated and they're communicated to the people that are impacted in a timely manner. So that's—those are the kind of the two big areas that I would see. And then in terms of the scope of work that we've brought forward to you tonight, the public outreach is probably the most as-needed service. And so, you know, we've scoped that to cover the next roughly 12 months. We very well could not—we may not use that amount of money over the next 12 months. That 12 months, that may serve public outreach for the next 24 months. What we definitely will be doing is spending some effort at the very beginning, coming up with a plan around those two topics and what the public outreach might look like if we need to address those two topics.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Marlon. John?
Thank you. Thanks, Rob, for the presentation. And Eric, thank you. A couple of questions for you. Thanks again for chatting with me also this afternoon.
Sure.
Follow-up items, I just will give you the pages in the agenda and ask questions from there if I could. Page number 49 of our agenda speaks to something that I was unaware of and you educated me on, but I think it's important for the public to hear it. It has to do with Subtask 82.3, Budget Management Cost Control, and this notion of a monthly earned value analysis. I understand it's a metric that you'll use to help the community as well as council understand how well we're doing with budget controls. Could you explain exactly what an earned value analysis is?
Sure. No, that's a good question. So earned value is something that we use in our industry a lot around not only things like construction, but also technical services, so design services, planning services and those kinds of things. So we look at a budget and how much has been expended of that budget. So if we have a $126 million budget, we'll look at how much has actually been expended of that budget. And so that's a pretty straightforward thing. There's this many labor hours that were expended, there was this many costs that were incurred. And so that's one number. The other number that we'll actually look at is how much was actually earned. So we may be 30% done with the budget, but the project may only be 25% completed in terms of what's been actually completed. And so we use that to come up with a ratio. So anything kind of less than one is we're not performing, so we're essentially over budget. And anything greater than one shows that we have a higher—we've produced more value than the cost that we've incurred. And so that's something that you, as a council, will continue to see as we move forward. It's a pretty easy metric to see in terms of one is good, less than one is not necessarily good, and better than—you know, higher than one is good, so.
And that will be reported on the website on a routine basis whenever that becomes available?
Yeah, so that's something that we will put on the website. So we've got a couple of different things that are identified in the scope of work in terms of the continual communication with not only the city council, but the public as well. So in the monthly reports that we generate and deliver to you, as well as the information that we present at the city council meetings, and then the information that we use to update the website, we will have the metrics like that in there.
Great. Page 50 in the staff report refers to the program manager will support, very first paragraph in review, processing and approval procedures for progress payments, i.e. the invoices that have been submitted by project managers for each project. I assume that's you as project manager doing that review. There were a couple of emails that came in from constituents asking questions about the possible need for what I will call not a program manager, but a potential project manager in addition to a program manager, to be responsible for portions of project management. And one of the specific things was this overview and review, being an advocate for the city, impartially looking at costs and then making decisions and reporting to the city based upon those. Could you just elaborate on how this works from your standpoint? And then also how it's reported or will be reported on a routine basis, either on the city website, and how the public will be able to see it?
Yeah, that's a good question. So again, when you see the first progress report, our formal progress reports that are going to start in—coming up in January of this next year, you'll be able to have a lot more granularity in terms of how the dollars are being spent. So that's one item. In terms of the invoice, the invoice review, that's something that we're doing now. That will only get ramped up more as we move into construction. And so we'll be going through and doing a detailed audit of the invoices on a monthly basis to make sure that what the contractor is asking for has actually been—has actually been completed. And then on the professional services side, for the design engineer for the conveyance facilities, we're looking to make sure that—you know, they said that they delivered this document and they're asking it be paid because they delivered this document. We're looking at those kinds of things as well. And then in terms of how that's communicated out to the public, as we mentioned, that'll be—that information will be made available on the WRF website, as well as any—the invoice payments would be made—would be visible on the city's Open Gov site as well.
Just want to add a little bit to that. In addition to our program managers reviewing that, they also go through a layer of our city finance department. Our budget manager reviews all payments before they come to me for authorization for payment. So we have various levels of review. It's not just one person looking at these invoices. And everybody along the way is making their recommendation, looking at different aspects of it to make sure that it is paid in accordance with the contract and the work has been completed.
Good. Appreciate that. Thank you. Page number—let's see, I think I just did page 50, didn't I? Yeah. Page number 52, a quick comment there, a question there, specifically speaks to under Task Number Nine, assumptions. The program manager, quote-unquote, is not responsible for the technical analyses included in the draft master reclamation plan. Again, I had a couple of conversations with folks about that. And can you just explain to me what you explained to me earlier?
Sure.
So the public hears exactly why that is and how that works?
Yeah, we have a little bit of a unique situation in that the previous program manager had developed the draft master reclamation plan that was delivered to the state for their review back in 2017. The state returned some comments to that plan. And those comments weren't addressed by the previous program manager, but they do need to be addressed. So they're no longer involved with the program. We have a draft document from them. So it puts us into a little bit of a situation where we need to take over the technical aspects of that draft document, finalize it, and address the comments that the state had in terms of the format for the document and some other elements from the rate study that needed to be incorporated in there, and then finalize that document. The document needs to be finalized for two important reasons. One is that document is being funded in part by a grant from the state. And so in order to get the remaining grant funding, that document needs to be finalized. And so that's one piece of it. It's half of $75,000 essentially. So we need to finalize that document so the city can get that remaining grant money reimbursed. The other thing is that the state needs that in order to be able to move forward with the SRF construction loan. So we're currently working—we've worked ahead a little bit on that document and our plan is to have that document completed here in the next couple of weeks. And so it's done and it's submitted to the state before the end of the year.
Great. Thank you. And on page number 53, the ever-concerning question about annexation, Section 10.1.3, again, a couple of questions came through on email. And specifically, as part of the work plan, it says that this phase of the program includes all steps necessary to annex the WRF project site into the city. And then it goes on to almost indicate that you're going to do LAFCO's work for LAFCO. And you and I talked about that. But once again, could you just go through the process of exactly what the acquisition is proposed to be? of exactly what the acquisition, acquisition is proposed to, to be, how that relates to the MOU, what the process utilized will be to do this, and how your involvement with LAFCO and other agencies will work under this portion of the agreement? Again, trying to vet this for public concern.
Sure. Our permitting strategy at this point is to do the initial permitting, land use permitting through the county, and then move forward with the annexation process for just the component of the, of the site where the, the facility will be. And then the city would annex that and then would be able to process the, the construction permit, the building permits through the city. So that's, that's the, that's the permitting strategy as we're, as we're currently moving forward. To answer your question regarding, there's a, there's a line in the scope of work that talks about assisting LAFCO and, and having them, and doing their work. We're going to be putting together, much like we do for different staff reports here for the city, we do a lot of the technical, put together a lot of the technical information. We pass that on to the folks that then have to finalize those staff reports. So we'll provide a lot of the technical information to LAFCO to help them draft, to help them draft reports. We do it, it's similar process for the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We draft a lot of the technical information so that they can put that into the city's permit when the city gets a new permit. So that's the kind of assistance that we're talking about, is providing the technical information, but not writing the staff report for them.
Lost my mic. Appreciate that. On your budget attachments, Exhibit B, just, you and I talked earlier again, but just for, for the public's clarification, the gray zone noted there under Program Phase Two, Program Implementation is actually completed Phase One, is it not?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. So wanted to make sure everybody knew that that, that indeed had really been completed and was not part of Phase Two. And, and my other question was, I note, the, one of the largest expenditures is for subcontracting with Rickenbach for permitting. And my question is, is that something that Corolo does not have the internal resources to do? And why specifically might, why, might we be utilizing that specific entity as a consultant? The question's been raised a couple of times, so I thought I'd go ahead and ask you that.
No, that's a good question. Mr. Rickenbach's been involved in, in this project for a long time. He's been involved with, with the permitting of that, the specific element of the permitting. We're talking about permitting. I want to make sure that we understand that we're just talking about kind of the land use and building permitting. We're not talking about the potable reuse permitting. So in going through and looking at the integration plan for the team, understanding his local knowledge, his relationships with the, with folks at the county, his work previously on the development of the conditional use permit application for the county, we thought it was prudent to, and can, continue to keep him involved in the project and, and have him help with the, with the permitting with the county and, and moving that process forward.
Is that time and materials also?
That's a time and materials as well. That's correct.
Okay. Great. And Marles asked my question about public outreach, so I, oh, losing my mic, getting it out. Thank you so much for a comprehensive report. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Matt?
Yes, I do have a question. And Eric, since you're there, I guess we'll point it towards you. This item is called Facility Program Management Contract Amendment. And when you were, earlier you were talking about looking at fiscal years and then looking at the project calendar. Can we expect these amendments to come throughout the scope of this entire project?
Yeah.
So an amendment is not necessarily a negative? That's something that was not thought of? This is just something that comes along?
That's correct. So when we put together, back in April of last year, we put together kind of an overarching umbrella component to the, the scope and the fee. And we said, we're, we're coming to you right now with just the Phase One and with an associated budget of this and a very detailed budget for, for that, because we had a good idea of what exactly that was going to look like. But we also said, from our knowledge of how these programs work and, and how this process is going to move forward, we see these three phases and they're going to include all of these different services here. We put together an initial estimate for those initial services and said, okay, we have the initial Phase One, this is what we think Phase Two is going to be, and this is what we think Phase Three is going to be. So within that scope of work, that's an exhibit to our contract, it says initials, the initial funds that have been allocated is the $292,000. And we think that the overall budget for all of our work between now and the end of 2022 is going to be somewhere close to $7.7 million. So that, and then it also goes on to say in that scope of work that we will be coming back on a, a roughly annual basis prior to the beginning of the fiscal year in order to identify that next, that next piece. So we're just working our way towards that $7.7 million, and this is the second, the second piece of that.
Because I guess semantics aside, when someone looks at the word amendment, when they think of the large scope of the $126 million, and they look at amendment, they go, oh, my gosh, we're going to be adding to this. So instead of that, this is just a natural process that we're going to be going through.
That's correct. These are, these were all kind of quote unquote planned amendments. So they were, they were included in the overall, the overall program management work.
Okay. And then also, I have a question about the calendar you were showing up there, Rob, but perhaps you can speak to it, Eric.
Sure.
And are these different portions of the, the project, will they be done simultaneously? Or are they, we're going to go through Phase One and Phase Two in a linear sense? Because I saw on the calendar up there, and I think, you might want to go back, I think we had two phases operating in the same calendar year. I don't know if that was a typo, or if there, these phases will be going on consecutively?
Yeah. And that's, and then you bring up a good point. And again, it goes back to a little bit of the, the nature of the design-build process where we have design and build going on at the same time, because you can really look at the Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three as, as program confirmation, you could call that the planning phase. And then program implementation, you could call that the design phase. And then program oversight, you could call that the construction phase in a very, in a very kind of commonplace design bid-build type project. But because we have a design-build piece of it, we will have a, a little bit of overlap between the Phase Two and the Phase Three. So for example, we're, we're moving into Phase Two now. We're going to be working on Phase Two, but we're hoping to start construction here in the summertime of next year when we, we'll still have design going on, so we'll still be providing design oversight on the design-build project. So part of the design, some, part of the program management team will be focused on reviewing the design calculations, the design drawings that are being done by the design-build team. We'll have other people that'll be on, on the program management team that'll actually be overseeing the construction that'll be happening out there. So we do have a little bit of overlap, but really Phase Two really won't continue on past the end of this next calendar year. So by the end of 2019, for all intents and purposes, we should be, we should be out of Phase Two, meaning that we will have, we will have started construction and completed all the design drawings, 100% design for the design-build work. So the, the design of the design and build is done, and now we're just focused on the construction. The conveyance facilities will have gone to bid. And the only other thing that's hanging out there on, from, that's a Phase Two component, would be the design of the injection, the injection wells that would, that would need to be done.
Okay, great. And then my last question, because so many questions have been asked, is in terms of the updates that councils will receive, we'll be receiving these monthly.
That's correct.
And then, but in terms of residents, Marley Bay residents, they'll be able to access on the city website and be able to go through these different phases and follow along with expenditures and whatnot?
Yeah. So you can, you can, the way to think about it a little bit is, so we've got our, we've talked about, a little bit about it, this PMIS, and it's our Program Management Information System. It's, it's our internal site that we use to manage, manage everything. By internal, I mean the program management team, members of the design-build team, city staff, and everybody else. That's a, kind of a fully dynamic, that's changing on a day-to-day basis as we're getting invoices in, as we're, as we're seeing things be, be accomplished, that system is getting updated. Essentially, what we're going to be doing is every, that, that's changing on a day-to-day basis. At some point during the month, we're going to hit pause on that, and we're going to put out a static report that will then go to council, and that static report would then be put up on the external WRF website. So you guys and public, and the public will be getting like a monthly snapshot, whereas we're looking at everything on a daily basis, we, we hit kind of pause every month, and then we push things to you, and then we put things up on the website as well. So that's kind of how that process, how that process will work.
All right. Red?
Yeah, I don't have any questions.
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up on the project management portion of Mr. Heding's question. And having, as you discussed that in this report, part of my question earlier today was every step of this process, and I know in the original slide portion, the, this laid out the amendment and the cost and where we at, will that project management tool, will that cover every amendment and every little component and snapshot of the process along the way, as we discussed earlier today? Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure. The way that we're, the way that we're setting up the, the program, the program, the PMIS and the program controls and what we report out to you and report out to, to, to the members of the community, is we'll look at everything on a, on a, on a top level. So we'll be looking at everything against the $126 million, that's our baseline, is $126 million. So you will be able to see how, how is the city performing, or how is, is the team performing to that $126 million budget in terms of the, the cost and the schedule. But what we're also doing is we're going to take that down to another level, and we're going to break that up into the three individual projects that make up the overall program. So you've got the $126 million program. Underneath that, you have the facilities that are being built at, that will be built out at, at South Bay Boulevard, that large component. Then we'll also have the conveyance facilities and pipelines component that we'll be able to, to track because it's a separate project. And then we'll also have the injection well component. So that's, that gives you a kind of an idea of, of what you're going to see. There's really kind of four individual components that you'll be able to see, the top line and the three individual projects.
And as something like this comes up as an amendment, there would be the ability to see, okay, this is the line item that's budgeted, there's a, here's the, as an example, this would be the percentage of that budget that we're fulfilling during this, this discussion. And further, further reports that come to council would be able to identify that.
That's correct. So for, for example, for the program management services, we'll have, those program management services will be broken down into individual categories as well. So we'll have program management services that are kind of general, that apply to the whole project, the whole program. But then we also have individual tasks and individual budgets that just apply to the onsite design-build facilities or the conveyance facilities. And so we'll identify those as well. So those individual line items, you, will be able to be tracked against, for example, the, the scope of work that you have in front of you. There's a Task Nine and Task Ten. Task Nine is our technical design overview and support for the conveyance facilities. So that has a number, and we have a budget, and you'll be able to see that budget and how the, how the cost is being incurred against that budget. Similarly, for the onsite facilities, we have a separate budget and a separate task that says, you know, this is our amount of money that we're using to oversee what's going on with the design-build project. Here's, here's what that budget is, here's what's, and here's what's been expended to date.
And the monthly reports that would be generated, what, what would we expect to see in that? How, how would it be constructed so it covers status of the project, the different components, the fund, the allocation of funds, expenses, all that? How, how would that be constructed?
We're, the way that it's constructed is we have a, a summary, kind of a top-line summary, and we like to use as much as possible graphics and colors and every, and those types of things to vary, at a very high level, to be able to see that for the overall WRF program, in terms of schedule, if, if we have, it, it would be green, yellow, red. So you'll, you see things like that, that will give you a very quick sense of how are individual components of the, of the program performing against budget and schedule? And then how is the overall program, how's the overall program doing in terms of budget and schedule? But we'll also have a lot of the backup available as well. So it caters to kind of different audiences in that way. For somebody who wants to take a casual glance to see in general, how's the budget, how's the budget going? Okay, the budget's going well, the earned value is above one, and there's, and it's green. That might be sufficient for somebody. For somebody else, they may want to see, oh, I want to see, what's the designer's budget? How are they performing against their budget for the conveyance facilities? And they'll be able to go into another level of that report and see, oh, okay, their budget was $500,000, and they're about done, and they've expended $400,000. They'll have their own performance indicators there and say, oh, okay, the design, the designer for that component of the project is, everything's going well with that. So there'll be kind of multi-layers.
So to say that the, the template is basically, you, you already have a template that you'd be utilizing to convey all that, or would staff, I mean, as, as things work through that, I could anticipate, you know, community members, council, et cetera, saying, hey, I need help understanding the way this is, the monthly reports are. And so we might have to, you know, tailor it to meet those needs. And, you know, I think of our finance directors, got some, you know, we've, great experience in that. We've worked quite a bit on just getting our, our budget documents so they're more fluid and easily to be read and understandable by the community members. So is there, how, how, how firm is the template, if that's the right word, that you'd be using?
Um, no, there's definitely some flexibility there. So just to give you an idea, so for that program controls plan, that task, some of the activities that we've gone through with that task over the last six to eight months since April of this last year, we had a couple of workshops. One workshop was, was heavily involved, or were heavily focused on, what is the right software to use? Should we continue to use the ProCore software? Or should we look at using something different to support the program and looking at something like the SharePoint platform? And so that was one workshop. And then we had another workshop about a month ago, which focused on what is the controls and the program reporting going to look like? And so we've done program management for a number of different programs, large, small, medium-sized. And so we, we have a couple of examples that we brought to staff and went through those with staff and said, okay, what do you like from this one? What do you like from this one? And then we also said, this is what we think might be appropriate for a program of this size, and then a program of this complexity, meaning certain programs that we work on, for example, one of them is a, is a, the metering program in the city of Sacramento. The number of construction, quote unquote, construction projects in, in that program is dozens. So this project, we really have three main construction programs. It's still a big dollar amount, but there's only three individual construction projects. And so there's, there's some different, there's some different layouts and different levels of information that work for different types of programs. And so that was the exercise that we went through. So, but you will see that initial, that initial one in January, and we have the opportunity to, to tweak that as, as we need to.
Okay. And then I think of my last question, your comment on starting the project next summer for grading, but we're not going to have the final design of the project.
Correct.
So understanding that council, community members will have to understand the design-build process. Are there other examples of design-built projects that could help us and the community understand, okay, we've started grading, there's a shovel in the ground, you know, there may be questions on what are we doing, doing the grading now if we don't have the project? And, and having an example of a design-build project that we could tap into as an example may be helpful. Is there, is there some, something like that that you can think of that might be available?
Um, I can, I can, I think I can explain a little bit about how the, the process is going to work. And so the reason why that we, the reason why we can start things like grading early is we can pretty quickly move towards identifying exactly what all the processes are, what all the equipment is, what the layout of the site is going to look like, and be able to do the rough grading pretty, pretty easily. A lot of those questions and a lot of that information is going to be, is going to be pretty well solidified by about the end of January. So the first deliverable that the design builder has is their 30% design that they're going to be delivering sometime towards the end of January. And so for all intents and purposes, at that point in time, the, the facility is, is designed. The things that will have to continue to happen after that, and once we start grading, are we're going to have a good idea for basin walls that go into the ground, they're probably going to be either 12 inches They're probably going to be either 12 inches thick or 14 inches thick. Not going to have a huge impact and wouldn't really have, wouldn't really be something that the community or council might be interested in, is the details of how thick those walls are going to be, or what the reinforcing detail is going to look like and those kinds of things. But those are the kinds of things that are going to be working and being completed as the grading is being done. Council's not going to care if this pipe that's going under the ground is, we've assumed it's eight inches and we go through and it may be a six-inch pipe, once we get to the final design and we decide to put that pipe in the ground. So we're really working on some of these pretty minute details and calculations that need to be done. But for all intents and purposes, you're going to, everyone's going to be able to see, have a really good idea of what the facility is going to look like at the end of January.
Okay, all right. Thanks. That concludes questions at this point. We'll move on to public comment. First up, we have, thanks, Eric. First, we have is Lori Noble. And then Jeff Heller. And then Nancy Bast.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lori Noble. I live in Morro Bay. My questions to this amendment, one, has to do with cost. For simplicity, $1.6 million for this amendment for a year's service is 10 people at $160,000 each. Does the city really need that many people to manage Phase Two? And Phase Two, quoting from their scope amendment, Phase Two will focus on program controls, funding support, permitting support, and provide technical direction to the WRF design-build team. My second question, has the WRF CAC Citizens Advisory Committee reviewed this amendment and issued a report to the council? If not, can this item, C1, be continued to another meeting after review by the WRF CAC? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jeff Heller.
I'd like to say, one of the main things I campaigned on was empowering the citizens' advisory committees, which for many of us in the community is really our favorite and best connection to the decisions that the council makes. When I found that this particular item, awarding a $1.6 million contract, or amendment to a contract, to Corolla was agendized prior to any review or input from the WRF CAC, I was shocked, to say the least. And when I looked up the history, that the last four WRF CAC meetings have been canceled unilaterally by the city. The last time the WRF CAC met was July 3rd. It seems to me that this is the most important thing going on in town, is this project. And I'm at a loss to why the city would unilaterally and with no explanation cancel the WRF CAC meetings. Those of us who are paying for this project depend on the input and the information we get from the WRF CAC. Who decided to agendize this item with no input from the WRF CAC? It's not right. I think this should be moved to the first meeting in January. I think the WRF CAC meeting that's scheduled for 12/17, that the WRF CAC should be asked to review this amendment in detail and give a written report at that meeting. If you're interested in healing, this is the decision you need to make. It's pouring salt on the wound to award this contract with no input from the advisory committee. Let me say one other thing about owner's agent, project executive. There's been a lot of misunderstanding, and I have not successfully explained the issue to you. But I think tonight it might be made clear by the services that were projected up here by Corolla. Now, Corolla is a fine firm, but we're basically asking them to self-regulate what services they provide. And what a project executive does, come in, involved, it can be one person with a lot of experience in these kinds of large projects. And you let that person make the decision on what services are provided. Let them decide. They are loyal to us, whereas Corolla is a business, they want to make as much money as they can. I'm not saying they're dishonest. I'm just saying, we need someone on staff to protect our checkbook on a day-to-day basis. That is the owner's representative. Mr. Davis, I appreciate you asking via email to explain that one more time. It's not an easy concept. By way of passing, Cal Poly no longer hires program managers. They hire construction managers, they hire architects, and their own staff work as basically owner's representatives.
Thanks, Jeff.
So that's my recommendation. Please start the healing process. Thank you.
Nancy Bast.
Nancy Bast, resident of Morro Bay. This contract decision should be continued until the new council and the advisory committees can publicly discuss it. It's a big deal. And it has, it's very confusing. It has, it's riddled with typos. It's just obfuscating and contradicting a lot of things in it, if you've bothered to read it. And I have. Has the Blue Ribbon and the committee and the WRF CAC reviewed it? I understand that those committees haven't met for months, and I don't think Corolla has earned the $290,000 for Phase One yet. They are taking credit for several actions that were in the pipeline and scheduled for processing anyway, like the EIR, the WIFIA application, and the WRF design-builder The dates, and Councilman McPherson got into this, she apparently was confused, like most people would be out here. The dates of the phases and the amendments are very confusing. Corolla allocates their revised budgets to each fiscal year, but the amendments and phases are geared to the calendar year, usually, but not always. For example, Phase One will be completed by December 31st of this year, but then Phase Two begins December 1st of this year. Then the amendments are, will cover January 2019 to December 2019. It's so confusing, and it's just a small part of the confusing dates that are involved. They say that there will be at least seven more amendment, contract amendments in the future. That's not much to look forward to. We learn in the text, that is riddled with those typo errors, that there is to be a secondary lift station. It was never mentioned in the EIR. God, this goes so fast. I'm practically, I haven't even said a third of what I wanted to say. These contracts, like, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Steve Stevens. And then Betty Winholtz.
Hi, Steve Stevens. So in regards to C1 and adding the $1.6 million for management services, I'd like to suggest there's not a need to panic, nor a reason for hurried response, given the council's current status. I would hope that the new city council would turn over a new leaf and begin to respect the citizen advisory oversight and a fair and balanced city council, citizen oversight groups. The past number of years have seen missed opportunities for the city council to benefit from the members of the community willing to offer sage alternative advice. Too many city council-sponsored citizen oversight committee meetings have been canceled month after month, and there's no accountability. I just have not heard anything from this current city council as to why that it's taken place. And it's an unfortunate opportunity because I think that there's a wealth of knowledge within our community. I propose that this council vote for a continuance and defer to the new city council in regards to hearing excellent citizen feedback via citizens committee and accelerating this process. And I appreciate, I just want to say in closing, I appreciate all the time and effort. I haven't agreed with some of the decisions that have been made through the process, but I very much appreciate the time that everybody has invested here. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Betty Winholtz. And then Marla Jo Sadowski.
Betty Winholtz, your questioning of the, Mr. Eric has raised some questions for me. One, could you please confirm that the $126 million includes the three projects? Like, all three projects are going to cost, at the most, $126 million? Because I thought the injection wells was a separate price. And I'd like to know that that $126 covers all three of those components. My second question has to do with the annexation. So the annexation is going to happen after you get permits from the county, but how are you going to build on the land if we haven't purchased it? And part of the purchasing is that we agree to help Tri-Ws to annex their land into the city. So it's not just a matter of annexing the little bit of land that the plant itself is going to be on, but how does that other piece fit into this purchase of the property and in the MOU where it says we facilitate their, rest of their property being annexed? And then my third question has to do with the California Coastal Commission, and that in the response to one of my questions that I emailed to the council, it said that they were hoping that the CCC, the Coastal Commission, would take over original jurisdiction of this project. I get that under an efficiency mentality, but if you take it away from the county, that leaves the citizens no appeal process. And maybe that's your goal. But if we go to the county for these applications and then, but we don't go there, then we're going strictly to the CCC, and then there's no appeal process beyond them. So my concern is for appeal routes and if you're preempting those.
Thanks, Marla Jo Sadowski. And then Carolyn Brinkman.
Good evening, Marla Jo Sadowski, North Morro Bay. I'd like to really follow Betty's comments up about the annexation and the sphere of influence on the Tri-W property and how that fits into all these different moving cups that you have on the table, that we're trying to follow where the nut is. I mean, first of all, I'd like to ask Eric Cesares if he could work up an earned value price for the Tri-W property, the purchase price that the city is going to pay Tri-W for? And then also the earned value price that the Tri-W landowners are going to receive from public funds in the facilitating that you're doing for that owner. I think it's extremely important for the citizens to understand how that's being viewed by you. And I also would like to ask Mayor Irons, since you signed the MOU agreement for the Tri-W property with Marshall Okelski, the representative for the Tri-W property, and that MOU specifically states that you are promising certain things from the city of Morro Bay to the Tri-W property owners. Have you specifically made it clear to LAFCO and to the citizens of this city that Marshall Okelski is the representative for Tri-W Inc., and he's also on the LAFCO board? And has Marshall Okelski recused himself from any of this decision? And have you, as an alternate, recused yourself from those decisions?
Thanks, Marla Jo. Next up, Carolyn Brinkman.
Good evening, everyone. I spent some time looking at the proposed amendment to the contract with Corolla that is before the council tonight. And it looks like the timeline from completion of some of the tasks for the indirect potable reuse part of the WRF project will be completed before a key part of the GSI feasibility study is complete, the part which determines whether injecting water into the Morro Basin will accomplish IPR. So I'm just asking for some clarification on the two timelines. And I know that Eric did say that it's hard to keep different timelines exactly coordinated, but this one seems like an important one. The amended contract with Corolla lays out the director's scope of duties and includes a timeline for the phases of the project. Phase Two of the WRF project will be completed by December 1, 2019, according to the schedule in this proposed contract. Phase Two of the WRF project includes these tasks related to the indirect potable reuse part of the project. Number one, development of an RFP for design of the off-site potable reuse facilities. Two, procurement of the designer for the off-site potable reuse facilities. And three, building services for the off-site potable reuse facilities. And that seems to include starting on the project. Again, these tasks are to be completed by December 1, 2019. Phase One of the GSI feasibility study is in progress. Phase Two of the GSI Water Solutions feasibility study involves pilot injection testing, and that's a very complex process, which I think includes a lot of permitting. This is scheduled to take 12 to 18 months. This means that the city wouldn't know until December of 2019, at best, whether injecting water into the Morro Basin for IPR will work. So I think the point is that there's some disconnect in the timelines. It looks like the RFP for the potable reuse facilities would be sent out. The designer for the facilities would be selected, and some work would begin on the potable reuse facilities before the city knows that IPR will work in the Morro Basin. So just some clarification on that disconnect between those two timelines. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all the speaker slips that I have of this item. With that, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Roger, you want to come to public comment on this item?
Yes, why not?
Okay. We'll reopen public comment. Welcome, Roger.
Thank you. Thank you. I have been observing this whole process with this WRF on the television, but never have I seen it more blatantly stated that this choice favors one entity, Williams Brothers. I see no reason for this I see no reason for this plant to be on that location other than for Williams. You're putting it right next to an elderly folks' home. Inconvenient, noisy. You're costing the citizens an enormous amount of money. And who's benefiting? The citizens certainly aren't. Those old folks certainly aren't. The bureaucracy certainly is. Corolo certainly is. And all these consultants certainly are. But not once have you ever listened to the citizens who have been speaking to you for these many months, telling you their dissatisfaction with this location, and why? Citizens have put you up there on the dais, and you haven't listened to them at all. You've listened to staff, you've listened to the consultants, but the people who live here and who are going to have to pay the bills, you've ignored for the benefit of Williams Brothers. I'm very upset about that. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's right. And I really hope you reconsider approving this tonight. I urge you, please, delay, defer. Let the new council deal with it, and give the citizens another opportunity to be heard. Not so much to speak, but to be heard. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Roger. Anybody else for public comment? We'll close public comment, bring it back to council. First couple ones, I guess the first one I'm going to respond to from Marla Jo Sadowski on the question about signing the MOU agreement by the mayor, and there's some other questions on here. So, just to be clear, the mayor's position signs many contracts, resolutions, and even the resolutions that are passed by council. This is more of an informational comment, but there are probably some examples of resolutions that have been passed by a majority that I said no to, but I still signed the resolution. The MOU that I signed was approved by council, whether it was 3, 2, 4, 1. So, I think for that standpoint, I know the question was directed to me, do I understand all the details about that? That was a council action, which the mayor will sign those documents. So, the question about have I made it clear to LAFCO, Marshall Okelski? I think staff can respond to some of the parts of that, but clearly if Marshall Okelski sits on the LAFCO board and there's any legal conflicts of interest, then he would recuse himself. And, you know, probably I'll ask our city attorney to comment anymore on that if you want to address that now. Chris?
If it turns out that the individual is holding basically incompatible offices or has a conflict of loyalties, then yes, he'd be asked to recuse himself from the LAFCO board. We can certainly take a deeper look into that and see if there is a conflict.
Okay. And then Eric, could you confirm the 126 million includes all three components of the project?
I can do that. It does.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks. And then the annexation, there's another question about the annexation after the permits by Ms. Winholtz as well. If you got that down, if you can clarify some of the question about agreed, so this is necessarily to agree to help Tri-W to annex their property, which isn't the clear point about the MOU? Maybe you can expand on that, whether it's Rob or Eric?
Maybe I could read what that section of the MOU says so that everybody is clear on exactly what it says. This is paragraph eight of our memorandum of understanding with Tri-W that the party signed. It's titled Annexation and Sphere of Influence Update, and it says, "The city will process an annexation for the property," and in this case, "the property is defined as the property for the WRF site, as well as a proposal to modify its sphere of influence to include the remainder portion." So, the remainder portion is the rest of the 400 acres owned by Tri-W. All that we said we would do is provide an application for the sphere of influence, not that we would annex that property or assist in the permitting of that property. We've included it in our general plan update as, so that it's consistent with our general plan, and we cannot guarantee what LAFCO's action will be on, including that in the sphere, other than we know that they've said in previous correspondence that they don't agree with that being in the sphere of influence. They've also said that they would entertain a proposal for annexation for public purposes for the WRF site itself.
Okay, thanks. And then the other part about the purchase price of the property, earned value price and how that works, and legally, we're only going to pay the appraised value. Can you expand on that, Eddie?
Sure. We're still in the process of acquiring an appraiser. It's amazing how difficult and how busy they are these days. But once we have the appraiser on board, they'll appraise the property, they'll report back to council what the appraised value is, and the decision will be made whether or not to purchase the property at that point. We're following the government, California government code procedures for the purchase of property. Also, there's a finding that the county planning commission has to make regarding the purchase of that property that will be involved with the permitting phase of that. The permitting process, we still not, don't have an answer from Coastal on consolidated permit, or whether the permit should be processed through the county. To be a consolidated permit, they have to have some permitting authority to the project, and they don't know that they have defined permitting authority on any of the aspects of the project. Likely, it will be permitted through the county with the requisite appeals processes that that involve, but that final determination has not been made, and we would bring any updates of that to council and as schedule permits to the advisory bodies.
Thank you. Anything else that I might have missed on public comment that needs to be responded to?
Carolyn Brinkman's comments about--
Okay, the injection wells? I think the, if you can clarify that, Eric. Thanks, Marla.
Sure. There were two questions that I wanted to clarify that were brought up. One has to do, again, the feasibility of potable reuse. So, the feasibility of potable reuse was determined in GSI's past work that was done and completed back in, I believe it was November 2017, which essentially says that the main regulatory driver for a potable reuse project is that the water can be injected into the ground, and it has sufficient time in the ground before it's then extracted, and that minimum time is two months. So, that report looked at a number of different alternatives in terms of the operation of the extraction injection wells, and said, under a number of different alternatives, this is feasible. So, the work that's currently, again, just to clarify, the work that's currently being done by GSI is, we're currently moving forward with two different options for the injection location site, one west of Highway 1, one to the east of Highway 1. So, trying to figure out what is the best, what has the most water supply benefit, and what allows us to put the most water into the ground and extract the most water out of the ground without causing any issues. So, that work that's currently going on, we anticipate that those questions are going to be answered, as well as some of the questions about the water quality are going to be answered beginning part of 2019. So, I believe that GSI's original schedule was 10 weeks, or 10 weeks, I believe, to get that done, and they've started that work a couple of weeks ago. Do you have any more questions on the potable reuse piece?
Well, only, I think, the issue of whether some part of that may, in fact, extend beyond this phase two that you have defined.
And that's a good point. Again, I said earlier, the vast majority of the phase two work, again, we're talking about things that are not construction-related, are wrapped up in this amendment. There are a couple of minor aspects, one of those being the procurement of the design engineer for those injection wells. So, that's really the one thing that's non-construction-related that needs to be done, that would come back in a future amendment that would be tied to the phase two. Really, what that would entail is that we would put together a request for proposals and put that out on the street, have, you know, review proposals, interviews, and select someone to do that design work. That work can be done, or that process can be initiated before we know exactly what the design of the injection wells is going to be. We can bring on a competent designer, or the best qualified designer, to do that work without knowing exactly, you know, is it two wells? Is it three wells? Is it, you know, a 12-inch diameter well, is it 10-inch? Those kinds of things.
And I'd like to address just one issue that was raised, and that's whether or not we've been canceling WRFAC meetings. And I think it's really important to keep in mind that WRFAC is a special project advisory board. So, while we had to pick a date where if it meets, it meets on a certain day, those meetings are scheduled on an as-needed basis. They are not expected to be held every month. There's when, there's a decision to make on the project that requires citizen input, then they will meet, and if they meet, they'll meet on that particular day. So, it's not that we have been canceling regularly scheduled meetings. I think it's important to keep that in mind. It isn't the same as our other advisory boards.
I did want to make one more quick point about WRFAC. So, the numbers that are up there on the screen, those numbers came right out of our original contract that was developed back in April. So, that original contract back in April said that our original phase of work is going to be this much. We think that all phase one, two, and three are going to be this much, that's $7.7 million. One of the things that I didn't necessarily talk about before that's included in the staff report is there's a table, it's Appendix C, I believe. So, as you remember, when we came on board and we, as the new program manager, looked at the budget from the ground up. So, we had the $167 million project budget that was out there, there was the $150. We came on board and we took the best available information at the time. We had a revised cost estimate from the conveyance design engineer that had progressed that project. We had numbers, real numbers, on the design build, based on the design build proposals and the evaluation that we had done, and we started to build from the ground up what we thought the budget for the project, the revised budget for the project should be. So, we actually came up with individual line items, and those line items, which rolled up into the $126 million project, those were scrutinized and reviewed, all those line items, by the Blue Ribbon Commission that the city manager put together to work on the rates. So, that $126 million program budget, the line items that were included, the line items that are identified in that Exhibit C, were reviewed by the Blue Ribbon Commission. So, just in terms of, you know, those numbers being seen and where they're coming from, they were originally put forward in the April 2018 contract. They were part of the, a major part of the discussion with the Blue Ribbon Commission when the rates were developed.
Right. So, just to follow up and clarify, the, what you're asking for now is really just money that has already been budgeted for program management services, and we could have awarded the entire amount, but instead, we're doing it in phases to really be more transparent, to show exactly how much of it we've used for each phase. Would that be correct?
Absolutely.
We are changing the amount of money that's being budgeted for program management services.
No, no. All of the tasks that have been identified in the scope of services are individual line items in the $126 million program budget. Again, that was developed with the Blue Ribbon Commission. I think one important note is to, not only did we do, did staff decide to do it that way, one, to reduce the cost, one, and the other is, we didn't have clarity exactly how the program was going to move forward. We had our best guess when we came in in April, things were in flux, and we needed to do the assessment, make sure that things, figure out how things were moving before we could really adequately scope that next phase. As it turns out, things were moving forward pretty well. Things haven't changed dramatically, and so our assumptions back then are still valid, and our estimates have kind of gone down from what they were previously when we had the original contract.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're going to end deliberation, but maybe follow-up on questions?
Yeah, one more question. I think to have staff respond to Mr. Heller's question, which really speaks to the fact that you're asking the quote-unquote "program manager" to self-regulate. Could you speak to the internal controls, maybe finance director or city manager, that we have for review of program manager decisions and the financial expenditures associated with program management, so that we can define internally how the process works and who we have defined as the internal agent that is acting for the city in review of the program manager's activities?
Yeah. I'll let Jen speak to kind of the specific process, but the WRF program manager reports directly to me, much like the police chief, the public works director, finance director, et cetera. You know, the buck stops with me. We have very good conversations. I'm very confident, and I've seen it demonstrated, that Eric acts on our behalf, but ultimately, Stroud is right. I mean, somebody has to be, hold all of them responsible, single point, and that's me. You know, I rely on my staff to create effective processes, to do the thorough review of things like invoices, and looking at the scope of work and making sure we're sticking to our timelines, but that responsibility falls to the city manager. And like I said, I've seen in action, I see that Eric acts on our behalf, but I'm the backstop to make sure that's true and accurate.
Thank you.
From the finance side of things, our budget manager reviews all of the invoices that come through to make sure that we are still within contract. Their invoices are also signed off by the public works director in terms of work completed and aligning with those contract terms. With this contract amendment, we'll start using the PO system that we've activated in our finance system, which is kind of that next level to make sure that we can't go over contract, or there's not appropriate, there's appropriation that's been approved.
All right. Anything else? Any follow-up questions, Matt? Did that--
No, that was pretty much the question I was going to ask, because that seemed to be an overriding concern with safeguards. And so, John, that was a great question and great answer.
Any follow-up questions, Red? None? Okay. All right. Into deliberation. Red, you want to start us off?
I appreciate the quality of the questions that came from the other end of the dais, and I feel as if the questions asked during public comment have been addressed. I'm completely satisfied that Mr. Collins is the representative for the city, the person where the buck stops, and I know that the amount of money was, for this phase, was reviewed during the WRFAC recommendation process earlier in the year. So, I'm ready to go with staff recommendation.
Matt?
Yes, I think one of the larger concerns that I think we voiced, but also that we received from emails from Ms. Winholtz and Mr. Heller, included this idea of what were these amendments for, and how were they to be used within the larger process? And I think the questions, not just from the public, but from us, I think it really cleared up the semantical difference from what people think of as an amendment, as extra, this amendment, that this is just part of the natural process. And by explaining that, especially with the overview, as then Scott and Jen talking about the catch-all that the city staff has to oversee our project manager, I'm also comfortable moving ahead with this.
Okay, Matt. John?
Right. Thank you. And thank you, staff and consultants, program manager, for the information provided. I'll go back to a comment that the city manager made in his opening statement, and it was a comment that he made-- opening statement. And it was, um, a comment that he made originally when the choice of program manager, and I say "program manager" was made by him. And at that time, when, when you went through the process, Mr. Collins, you evaluated and felt that there were really two good candidates for project management, but that what the city needed was program management. And the depth associated with an organization like Corolo, because of the tremendous number of working pieces that were involved in a project of the magnitude of $126 million, or hopefully less than that. Those components, including the, the CIP review that has been, been completed and proposed, the One Water Plan, um, all of the permitting portions that will have to be considered, the engineering and, and tactical and design oversight that has to be done, the financing, the, um, inter-agency coordination, and I could go on and on and on. Those aren't just pieces of building the project, those are part of and parcel of the oversight of a major project. That's a program. And, and your choice for program management versus project management, in my opinion, was a bold move, because it was contrary to recommendations that you had received. However, this council agreed wholeheartedly with that, and I continue to advocate for your excellent decision-making in, in terms of a program manager versus a project manager. I, I want to make that clear from the beginning. Two, I have discussed, as ad nauseam, the internal control processes that we have for reviewing invoices, expenditures, financial controls, the establishment of standard operating procedures, the development of transparency with our new, um, program that is on our website, I always forget the name of it, but, OpenGov, that, that literally has every check that's written. And, and in discussing many times the internal controls that are in place, I remain extremely comfortable that we have a viable process that does not require another external reviewer to review the financial expenditures that we are approving via our budget and, and the amendments that come with an amendment such as this. Thirdly, I think the council should be commended that we did not go along with any recommendation to simply approve a $7.7 million program management budget, but instead have asked for that to come back in what I'll call a piecemeal fashion, to be reviewed just like this, um, when budget cycles occur, realizing that portions of it do cross over other budget cycles. But in order to be even more transparent and to scrutinize closely all of the elements of a contract such as this, an organization never approves a significant all-in budget for program management. One, reviews amendments as they come forward as new tasks and new responsibilities are discerned to be appropriate for the next season, season of work on a major project like this. So, I, I commend the council and the working groups for recommending that we use the amendment process and, and for following that. If you look back in April, WRFCAC, the Citizens Committee, looked at this program management overall contract, vetted it completely, and made recommendations to move forward with a change in program management. I, I don't see the need to postpone this and to, to again, send it back for piecemeal review by WRFCAC. I think we're at the point now where the city council is the appropriate venue for future amendments to be reviewed and for the decisions to be made, because we have all appropriate standard operating procedures and processes in place to allow for controls that allow us to make the appropriate decisions. With all of that being said, I support this amendment, and, um, I support staff's recommendation to move forward with the expenditure as outlined.
Thanks, John. Marlaus?
Yep. Well, I concur with my colleagues. Um, I fully agree with everything that has been said so far. I do want to add that I was one of the council members who, we didn't participate in the interview process, but we observed the interview process. So, I had the opportunity to see the Corolo team present, as well as the other. And I fully support the city manager's decision to move forward with a team approach, which provides us with all of the expertise needed with one contract, as opposed to multiple contracts under a single project manager, to fill in all of the gaps. And I really believe that we can see the difference in the way that we have received updates, and I fully support the Corolo team moving forward, and I support this amendment.
All right. Thank you, Marlaus. And with that, I, I agree with, and concur with my colleagues on council with their comments, and would also support the contract amendment that's before us. Appreciate, um, staff's input and to, in response to questions. And as I wrote down the public comment from folks that attended tonight, so we've had, um, several different comments, whether it's tonight or previous council meetings, where there's specific questions about the overall costs, and how does that include, what are the components that are involved, annexation, severe influence, the injection wells, um, uh, we have comments about Williams Brothers benefiting on this, and whether or not we're listening to all the comments. And certainly, we've, we listen to our comments and our inputs, and we make a decision. And the outcome may not be in agreement to all the comments, and, but that's what, that's moving forward. So, I, I agree with this, the amendment, and I think for council moving forward, um, about a year ago, when we were discussing various contracts and making the decision for the South Bay site, we also had discussion on the amount of time that we put into reviewing the various sites. Uh, Rigetti was one of those sites with the neighborhood comments and input on whether or not, how much time we would spend battling potentially, um, that particular site. South Bay was the final decision. And in doing so, the other comments made, which I made as well, is that we, we need to accelerate the, the project. There's been a lot of, um, excess time spent on finding the location and getting to that point, but there's a time schedule order, and we need to accelerate this project. And part of the comments were that if we need to keep the project on schedule and it doesn't go to our citizens advisory committee, that's what we should do. So, unless council changes that directive, then I would expect that staff would be doing that, making that effort to keep it on schedule, and it, and case by case, where we need to get a contract, there may be a report or study that needs to be reviewed to keep the project moving, then it would come to council, and we would make those decisions. Ultimately, they are, they're all coming to schedule, to, to council for those decisions anyway. Um, we just so chose, early on, to form a citizens advisory committee that would help along the path of coming to deciding, one, a location, and analyzing some of the technical feasibility studies that got us here. So, I would agree with council member heading as well, in, um, whether or not these, these types of decisions should be coming directly to, to council as well. Um, and I, I just want to emphasize and, and make sure that as far as agreeing with this, the staff recommendation on this amendment, ensuring that the, the budget management, um, tool that we'll be using in the future will basically cover every line item that's, that's coming forward. So, when we get a staff report like this, we will have the, the, the cost controls as part of the staff report to, to inform council and the public where we are in this budget. And hopefully, that'll, that'll be part of it as we move forward. With that, I would, um, take a motion.
May I make a motion?
Yes, yeah.
All right, thank you. I move that the city council authorize the public works director to sign amendment number one, attachment one, to the existing agreement with Corolo Engineers Incorporated dated, excuse me, April 11th, 2018, for program management of the water reclamation facility program in an increased amount of $1,606,948.
Second. So, we have a motion by Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Mr. Irons. Hey, look at that.
Subcommittee.
Yeah. Um, any further questions? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Uh, and if we can take a short recess, we'll take a short recess and be right back. Thanks. Okay, up next, item C2. Item C2 is a review and approve the First Amendment to Employment Contract with Scott Collins, our city manager, and Chris Newmeyer, our city attorney, will be presenting this, and you can describe kind of the background on this. Thanks.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, we have a contract amendment on the agenda tonight, as just mentioned, for First Amendment to Employment Contract with Scott Collins, city manager. Uh, as a matter of quick background, on October 10th, 2017, city entered into a contract with Mr. Collins to start as city manager on November 7th, 2017, a little over a year ago. Uh, city council since then has had a number of reviews of Mr. Collins, and they've expressed, quote, "complete satisfaction", end quote, with Mr. Collins's performance over the last year. Uh, the original contract provided an option for a review of Mr. Collins' salary in May of this year. Uh, Mr. Collins declined to ask for a review or consideration for increase in salary back in May. Uh, now, over 12 months after the contract was entered into, pursuant to the original contract, city council has reviewed with Mr. Collins, uh, potential increase in the contract salary, and is recommending that the salary of $1,79703 be increased to $1,8800, which is about a 5% increase. And that also is pursuant to, in part, a COLA increase for all management. And also, uh, city is recommending that the annual deferred retirement be increased from $3,500 to $5,500 a year. That would be a total of $11,681 annual increase, which has been budgeted for. And also pursuant to the government code, uh, a recent amendment to the government code, section 54953(c)(3), which provides in part that prior to taking any final action as contemplated by this agenda item, the legislative body shall orally report a summary of a recommendation for a final action on the salary. And so, I'd ask the mayor to, uh, turn to page two of the staff report, and there's a summary provided there of the, um, two items in the amendment. Um, if the mayor could review that, and if he agrees to recommend it, then to please orally report so.
Would you like me to read that now?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
So, you're talking about the part where the law's unclear, that, that statement there, or the actual amount?
Uh, yeah, it's just the, the two lines on...
The two lines?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, um, the city managers, manager's annual sal, salary will be $188,800. The city's annual contribution to its deferred compensation will be $5,500.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, that is pursuant to the government code, that the legislative body make that oral report. Um, so, in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council, after review of the First Amendment, approve it and authorize the mayor to sign it on behalf of the city. And the changes in the First Amendment are noted with double underlining in the attachment in the staff report, and I'm available for any questions that city council may have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll start with questions, Rhett. Any questions?
No.
No questions? Any, Matt, any questions?
Yes, I do have one question. In terms of, um, the one line, um, Chris, in the backgrounds discussion where it talks about which includes a COLA increase applicable to all management employees, could you explain that, um, in terms of this increase for this recommendation, in, in terms of the comparison to the other management positions?
Um, other management positions are entitled to, or can be, receive a COLA increase. Um, as for the exact numbers for other management positions, I would have to defer to...
No, I guess I, the percentage point of that COLA increase would be roughly 3%?
Uh, I would have to defer to the finance director on the percentage points outside of the city manager.
Okay.
The increase was 2%, and that, that occurred in July, so this is just encompassing that 2%?
I guess I wanted to break it down in terms of looking at this, as, as much as I understand the process, reading through it, is like, okay, this 5%, actually, if you take out the other 2% that the other management position's got, I wanted to understand and to put it out there, so people are listening. Okay, and that's my only question. Thank you.
And I would just clarify to you that this increase isn't budgeted for, but you'll see in your first quarter budget adjustment that you see on Thursday.
And we'll also, in this discussion, in this explanation, it's explained how that will be paid for, also, correct?
That's correct. There's, um, sufficient expenditure savings this year to cover the cost.
John?
No questions.
Marlaus?
No questions.
Okay. And with that, I'm looking for public comment at this time, and I don't have any speaker slips, and I don't have anybody for public comment at this time, so we'll close public comment, bring it back to council, and look back towards Rhett for comments.
Sure. I could not be happier with the performance of Mr. Collins. Um, and I continue to learn from him the role of a successful city manager. And I want to approve this contract amendment.
Matt?
Yes, I also, um, agree with Rhett, um, in terms of what Scott's brought to the table, and in terms of, um, working with staff and watching the interaction with staff across the board, including, and then that means including working with council, but then also with the council, you know, with, um, the public. I think he's done a great job, and I have no problem at all moving ahead with this.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. I, I would agree with my peers. Mr. Collins exposed himself to four reviews over the last year. We, we, you know, it's very important when you have a new employee to, um, look very closely at their performance at the very beginning, and we set up quarterly reviews. I know it was torturous, but, um, that, I think, gave us good information both about, uh, Mr. Collins, and also gave him information about us. I, I find him, and I'm in agreement with both of you, to be a, a superior city manager. Um, his work is outstanding, and we're lucky to have somebody of your caliber and character here, so I highly support this and am ready to move forward with it.
Marlaus?
And I just concur with my colleagues. I couldn't be happier with Mr. Collins, and I also support this amendment.
Okay. I too would support the amendment, and, uh, also extend my gratitude, Scott, as a first-time city manager. Um, we had, we undertook a, a big elephant on the WRF, and, uh, with all that, just thanks for that. And also extend, uh, thanks to staff. Uh, there's definitely a support all the way around, uh, to keep it going, so, um, I, I would approve the, um, the contract, and would take a motion for that. Anybody?
Sure. I recommend that we approve the First Amendment to the Employment Contract with Scott Collins, city manager, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Ms. McPherson. Any further discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. Beautiful. All right, thank you. Now, we'll move on to our next item, item C3. Now, we'll move on to our next item, Item C3. Item C3, this is the adoption of Resolution 9418 declaring a homeless shelter crisis. Are you introducing the item, Mr. Collins?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Scott Collins, city manager. As the mayor indicated, this item is a recommendation to declare a homeless shelter crisis. That sounds very stark, so I think it bears importance to provide some context so that the community and council understands what we mean by this and what the implications would be should the city decide to move in this direction. Ultimately, the city's part of a larger ecosystem, if you will, in the region as it relates to social issues. We maybe don't experience homelessness to the same degree as maybe downtown San Luis Obispo or the component parts of the county, but we're all kind of in it together. And the state of California is facing unprecedented homeless crisis. It's been declared in many cities prior to a program really being established to be able to react appropriately to the degree that this crisis has reached. But now, we actually have a program available because the state of California has finally recognized the degree to which this problem has grown, how it affects law enforcement, how it affects mental health, how it affects schools, how it affects youth. Basically, all points of the community is impacted by homelessness, and the program probably only seems to grow and not shrink, and it requires a kind of all-hands-on-deck approach if we really want to get our hands wrapped around it and start to make improvements. So, this program called the Homeless Emergency Aid Program, which was established through Senate Bill 850 during the previous fiscal year budget creation, creates an extremely flexible source of funding, something that's pretty unprecedented in the history of the state of California, at least recent history, of $500 million to be allocated to continuums of care. And continuums of care are really kind of a regional approach to addressing homeless issues. They're kind of the place or the base where money comes in, and then they have an idea of kind of all the services that are available, the clavoscopes, the services that are available, who the most impacted individuals are, most impacted areas are, and they know really how to target that funding. So, it's good that we already have that existing here in Slow County. So, ultimately, what the state's looking to do is to kind of make sure as much of that money gets spent as quickly as possible to really make a dent in the issue. Slow County would receive approximately $4.8 million. That's an estimate at this point, but it probably will hold up. There's some formula based on kind of the number of homeless that were counted in the previous point-in-time survey and some other metrics, but we think that number's pretty solid. And as I mentioned before, it's really flexible. It can be used for programs or existing services or capital improvements. And again, recipients must spend the money by 2021. This is a mandate. Because the issue is getting to such a level, we want to make sure, the state wants to make sure the money's not being squirreled away, that it's actually being spent on programs that have already been deemed defective or to bring infrastructure to areas that are solely lacking it as it relates to homeless services or shelters. In order to be eligible for funding directly, in other words, if the city wanted to be recipient of direct funds, we would have to declare a crisis, a homeless shelter crisis. And I believe all cities, and maybe the exception of one and the county of Slow itself, have declared this emergency, have made that declaration already. For some context, the last point-in-time survey was conducted in January 2017. We are due for another count. We are in talks with the county about how we can make sure that's done effectively. But ultimately, what the point-in-time survey does is provides a comparison over time. It is not an exact science. You know, relying upon volunteers, you could have a really bad weather day when they go out and do this, you might not be able to find everybody, but it certainly is some measuring stick, if you will, for how we're doing overall. The last count in the county, we had 1,125 individuals who are experiencing homelessness in the county, some sheltered, most not, and 36 identified in Morro Bay, none of which were sheltered, because we don't have a shelter here. That number doesn't seem like a lot. There probably is more, however, each one of those individuals had an impact on themselves, potentially on their friends, on law enforcement, as our chief police can attest to, fires well, and Public Works. Basically, all harbor, all points of service are affected by this. So, it does require us to take a hard look at that and really measure up, do we feel this is imperative to declare that crisis, or are we okay with where we're at? It's a tough call, I admit. Declaration and then how the HEAP funds works, by declaring a shelter emergency crisis or emergency, the cities who do this are gaining immunity on certain building code requirements as it relates to emergency housing so that we could prop up or stand-up housing quickly. Some of the review processes are mitigated in that respect. Of course, health and safety is maintained, but it's, there are some ways to limit the requirements to ultimately allow for a quicker stand-up and less cost. It also makes us, as I mentioned, eligible to receive direct funds from the HEAP program. It's intentionally broad parameters for usage, as I mentioned, because of the level of the crisis that we've reached, so capital projects and services are eligible. The first round of awards, I think, Marleus, Councilmember McPherson mentioned December, that's what we'd want to submit to the county, and then the county would ultimately make the broad package application to the state by January 31st, 2019, so we would need to get ours in to the county by the end of December. And there is a second round of funding in May of 2019. All those funds would need to be expended by 2021. Another important note where we actually do pretty well, the applications need to demonstrate there's been a local collaborative effort prior to the submittal of the application. We all know how successful Eback has been, how inclusive they are, and how their influence and reach has been extended since their creation. We do have representatives from the police department on there. Councilmember McPherson attends their meetings regularly, and I'm in contact with Sharon, who kind of is the, she's an amazing volunteer coordinator, but also on the ground floor of kind of what's going on, what's working, not working in the field of addressing homelessness. So, we certainly stand to benefit from that existing collaborative effort and could take it to the next level should the council decide that declaring an emergency is the right move, and then ultimately, the next step would be to determine what kind of application we'd want to submit, what issue are we, specific to homelessness, are we going to try to address? Is it shelter, or is it more services? I mean, that's definitely open to discussion. So, the recommendation at minimum today is to adopt the Resolution 9418 declaring a homeless shelter crisis in Morro Bay pursuant to the Homeless Emergency Aid Program under Senate Bill 850, and then go from there.
All right. Thanks for the staff report. Any questions from council? Marleus, you want to start off?
Yeah, I think the only question I have, and I understand this and will make some comments during discussion, but the only question I have is, is there any downside risk in declaring a crisis? Any, and that's really the, I mean, we see the advantages of doing it. Are there any disadvantages?
I mean, I think there was in, before this program existed, you know, for instance, San Francisco and LA declared emergencies, really from a, I think it was more of a PR move to really get the state to engage. There wasn't really any benefit from doing it in some respects, certainly, maybe some perceive that as an impact on business or tourism because they're shedding light on their homeless issue, but from this standpoint, there isn't really any downside. As I mentioned, almost all the cities, at least maybe the exception of one, have made that declaration here in Slow County, I think recognizing the benefit.
All right. John?
Thanks, Scott, for the overview, and I'm very concerned about the homeless population, so please don't take my questions as being disrespectful to that population, but I read Government Code 8698.2, and it's very nebulous in terms of the interpretation. And so, I guess my first question is, given the fact that only 0.0034% of Morro Bay's population, given this is a single sample, might be determined to be homeless, are we, within the context of Government Code 8698.2, of really declaring this as, quote-unquote, "a threat"? And second part of that question is, how have we determined it is a public health threat to both public health and safety for those persons, just in terms of our criteria, what we've done?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, in some ways, subjective. I mean, I, to be honest, we're dealing with humans, and each homeless individual is an individual, and then it's easy to clump them all together, but they all come into their, in and out of homelessness for different reasons. Some environmental, some mental, some, you know, a priori, some that they've developed on their own. It's very, very hard to pin down, you know, a single source of homelessness, and by extension, you know, their impacts are individual to the community and to themselves. You know, we could probably ask the police chief what the impact has been on his department, the number of contacts that they come into with individuals, whether they're being, from a proactive policing standpoint, or responding to businesses, you know, where folks are sleeping in their alcoves and maybe creating impacts for their overall economic well-being. There's two sides of that coin, right? The individual who's suffering, and then the impacts to, potentially impacts to tourism and impacts the staff workload. So, it's a subjective measure. I don't know how I could answer that with finality, but I would say, you know, we definitely feel, are feeling the impact of homelessness, and in some respects, seeing a rise of it, albeit small, but, and it doesn't necessarily compare to other components, or other parts of the county, but it's, seems to be on the rise of it.
That's satisfactory to me. I know there isn't metrics or absolute data that we're going to have at this point, but I just wanted to be sure as we approved it that we're some, we have some definition of what that means. What county entity will this flow through in terms of the determination of what might come to Morro Bay? I wasn't sure what entity exists that will be applying and how it will flow.
Yeah, my understanding is that the continuum of care in San Luis Obispo would be the facilitator who we would kind of submit the, our application, if you will, and then they would compile all the other submittals from the county, from the other parts of the county, and then ultimately make a decision as to what that package looks like that's submitted to the state. And I know Marleus has had extensive talks with the county health department or human services department that deals with this, so she might be able to answer that better.
Yeah. If I could just suggest, the Housing Services Oversight Council, which is comprised of representatives from all of the cities, that is the organization or the body that would make the decision on who will receive the grants. And they make a recommendation then to the county board supervisors, who makes the final determination. And the way this program will work is they will allocate an amount of money to San Luis Obispo County. We get to decide at that level who gets the money within the county. So, that's how it works. And it is a county-level social services agency that is the oversight, yeah.
Good.
But there's, the Oversight Council will make the funding decision.
Got it. Just wasn't sure where that might flow through. Just in, just looking at the resolution, did we, we put in the city of Grover Beach has developed a homelessness plan. Is there a reason we have that specifically in our whereas?
Sorry, that was a typo. I don't know how that got in there.
Oh, okay. So, that would be deleted.
This is basically a frame, framework has been used by every city, so that was a typo that should have been removed, so.
So, if we approved it, that it would be absent that specific whereas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And again, as I read this, this is one-time funding?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Matt?
No questions.
All right. Rhett?
Being that this is one-time funding, would it be fair to say that if the city implemented an ongoing program, that once the funds are used up, the city would be expected to continue the service out of its own funds?
I mean, that's a great question. My anticipation is that the funding review arm that Councilmember McPherson just discussed would probably look at applications that, if they're going to do services, that there would be some commitment post the money being expended, though it's certainly not a requirement, but I could see them maybe putting a higher priority on those entities that were going to take on the burden if there was a continuation of the program. I think a lot of cities are really looking at it from that vantage point, saying, well, maybe we shouldn't invest in infrastructure, temporary shelters or the like, because that's ultimately what this is, is declaration of shelter crisis. So, from that vantage point, you could just be putting that money into improvements that don't really necessarily have an ongoing funding impact or requirement other than maintenance. So, it's kind of, it depends on what issue we're particularly trying to solve here in Morro Bay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. I don't have any questions at this time, and I'm looking for speaker slips, which I have none, and looking to the audience for anybody for public comment, seeing none. I'll bring it back to council for deliberation. And Marleus, you want to lead us off?
Yeah. You know, I am the representative to the Housing Services Oversight Council as well as to the Astero Bay Alliance for Care, so I have been working on this issue, and I really brought to Scott the idea, or I should say, Laura also did, since she wanted to inform all of the cities of this funding opportunity. So, I've had discussions at both the Eback meeting, and I've listened to what other cities are talking about, and given the restrictive requirement that the monies have to be expended by June 30th, it really does come down to only certain kinds of programs that you would really consider funding. And the one that really comes up over and over again is providing the temporary shelter during inclement weather for homeless. And we don't have that kind of a facility in Morro Bay, as you know, and so, we have had, I have talked to folks who have said that when we have rain or when we have inclement weather of any kind or cold weather, they have to try to find a place for people. And they, Los Osos has a warming shelter, up at, so has a warming shelter, and we don't have any facilities here. And when they've tried to take them to Los Osos, Los Osos isn't willing to necessarily accept them if they are full of people from there. So, we really do have a situation where we could use a facility of that type, and the grant would then be for renovating either part of a building, improving the facilities. I had originally thought about the vets hall itself because it would allow, we would, it would allow us to remodel bathrooms, kitchen, et cetera, as part of the grant, to set up a temporary warming shelter. But that is not necessarily the direction we're going. It may be some other building, it may be some other facility. I have been in communication with a number of people who tried to get this started a couple of years ago, two of whom came tonight to speak, and it didn't work out. But here's an opportunity to get it paid for. And so, I think we would be competitive in the process. I will pursue that issue of who else is submitting grants, but we have not done it before. We have not received any kind of homeless services grant from the county, and many other of the cities have. So, I think we can demonstrate a need, even though the point-in-time count said 36, if you talk to our police chief, you might say 50, and then when you talk to Sharon O'Leary, she's going to say 70, and 100 people come to the community dinners. So, there's clearly a homeless population that's fairly permanent here, and they really don't have a place to stay when the weather is bad. So, I am pursuing the feasibility of where and how, and I think the key element is the one that Rhett has mentioned, which is this would have to be staffed by volunteers. And the Los Osos shelter is staffed by volunteers, so I intend to get a lot of information from them about how it works. I intend to pursue with local folks, is someone willing to be responsible for organizing that on a temporary basis? And if it's not... And if it's not feasible, I will report back that it's not feasible. But that was why I wanted to, it has to be done quickly, and I am willing to work on it personally to make sure that we would get something submitted by December 31st if we, and this is just the first step. I would bring back to council what the concept is of, that we would be asking for, so that's, so I'm supporting it.
I support staff's recommendation, and I'm sorry, I just had one other clarification under fiscal impact, the last word. Should that be county? It will be eligible to receive heat funds to support homeless programming in the community either directly or indirectly through the county, not through the city?
The city would, I think, ultimately receive the funding. And so if we don't declare an emergency, but the continuum of care submits an application for a service in Morro Bay, then Morro Bay would still be a recipient, not the city, but the community would be recipients of those funds. So it's a bit of a nuance there, but ultimately, if we make the declaration, we apply for the funds, I believe the city would come, the money would come through the city eventually to make those payments for whatever services or upgrades to facilities we made. Does that make sense?
Well, it didn't, I'm not going to belabor the point. It was just a minor thing, just, thanks, I'm good.
As this has come up in the last few years, Marla, with your involvement and then knowing with the Astero Bay Alliance, and this is very valid, and with Linda and Chuck coming and speaking to today, I think that approving this and the way you explain it was great, and so I would be totally in favor of moving ahead with this.
Red?
Yes, I agree with Matt. I really appreciate the thoroughness with which Marla has worked through this, and certainly a failure to declare a crisis closes a door that we don't want to close. And my only caveat, which I think the rest of the council shares, is ongoing expenses that we do not currently have. But I agree, a warming shelter, it would be a great addition to our community, and I, I really want to provide something for folks who are exposed to the weather. So, so I concur with declaring the crisis.
I'd also concur with the staff recommendation on this, with the correction on the whereas that lists Grover Beach and just striking that resolution. And in support of that, I know as a former Slocog member explored the idea of some of the, actually Slocog RTA exploring some of the opportunities of taking one of the old buses and converting that. It's not new, it's not necessarily a new idea. There's been some that in the cities that do that for showers and stuff. The challenge is getting organizational volunteers to organize, to do that, and, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't be giving it a try. So I'd be supporting that. And with that, if there's, Marla, do you want to make a motion on this?
I do. I move that the council adopts Resolution Number ninety-four dash eighteen, declaring a homeless shelter crisis in Morro Bay pursuant to the Homeless Emergency Aid Program under SB eight fifty, with the exclusion of the whereas in the resolution having to do with Grover Beach.
Motion by Ms. McPherson, second by Mr. Makwatski. Any further discussion?
Thanks to Councilmember McPherson for all the work that she's done on Eback and with the Housing Coalition. I do appreciate that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries five out.
Matt? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can I just add that I understand the caveats in the discussion, and I'm fully cognizant of them. So in working forward over the next couple of weeks, I will be sure to take that into account.
Okay, thank you for that. Next item, Item C four. This is to receive and file fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen status report on receipt and use of development impact fees.
Thank you. Good evening. This is an item that was on the previous agenda and was delayed to this, this agenda, but we had plenty of time to meet the deadline of December 31st, so no big deal. This is a report that's required by the government code. It's referred to as AB sixteen hundred, and we report out on the collection of impact fees that we take in each year. We're required to report on the beginning fund balance of those fees, the amount collected, the amount used, specifically what they were applied towards, and then the year-end balance. This is in order to ensure that we are using the fees collected appropriately as they are collected for very specific purposes, and to also report that we have sufficient projects, potential projects in the future to continue collecting the fees and support expenditure of those fees. If we cannot do that, then we are required by law to return the fees. So this is the reporting mechanism that keeps us accountable to that each year. The city has five different funds that hold impact fees. Those are outlined for you in the staff report. They're government impact fees, and it's held in one fund. There's six different categories of those fees, administration, police, fire, street, storm drains, and parks fees. There's an affordable housing in lieu fee fund, two different funds, one for water and one for sewer impact fees, and then a miscellaneous impact fees in our trust and agency fund, of which there are four different types. The Highway one, Highway forty-one, and main intersection traffic impact sewer master plan and flood hazard plan. As part of the reporting requirements, interest has to be allocated as well. So we've gone and gone back and started accumulating beginning fund balances, ending fund balances, and distributing interest among the different impact fee types, and also identified any usage of the funds during the seventeen eighteen fiscal year. The last note is the report is required to be made publicly available at least fifteen days before it's heard before the council. It was at the front counter of City Hall on October twenty-sixth, so we did meet that deadline. We didn't have any inquiries that we were made aware of, so anybody that came in could have easily accessed it but didn't have any questions for us. The attachment to the staff report gives the detail of each impact fee. The city's fee schedule is attached so that the cost of the fee is included with the report. I'll go through quickly what the balances are and what was collected, and then if you have any questions, Rob, Scott, or I can answer those for you. We worked on this together. For government impact fees, during seventeen eighteen, we collected two hundred and almost twenty-one thousand dollars in fees. Sixty-eight thousand dollars of that was used for the facilities, Delmar restroom rehab and ADA sidewalk gap work. That left an ending balance in that fund of eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We have proposed projects outlined for you on page eighty-six of the packet, the agenda packet. Please keep in mind that these are proposed projects. They're not all budgeted and/or approved per the budget. It's just a list of potential future projects that these fees would be eligible to help fund. Secondly, we have affordable housing in lieu fees, collected a hundred and seventy-seven thousand during the year, allocated six thousand dollars out in seventeen eighteen for an ending balance of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. This is the fund that's supporting the home share slow dequeuement each year of five thousand dollars, so we've included that as a potential future project, as well as the housing element update and implementation. For our sewer impact fees, we collected eighteen thousand dollars during seventeen eighteen. We didn't apply any of the, of those fees towards expenditures during the fiscal year, leaving a balance of just over four hundred thousand dollars for appropriation. All of the sewer-related capital improvements in One Water would qualify for funding under these fees, so we would apply those to future projects identified in the One Water Plan. The water impact fees, we collected a hundred and, almost four thousand dollars during the year. We exceeded the balance in that of seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, mostly on One Water and the Wharf Project, all of which would qualify. The reason that that is shown as more than available is just to show that we used up all of the fees that we collected and had a balance of. So we currently have no balance of water impact fees. Anything we collect in the, this fiscal year and the future fiscal years would qualify under the One Water capital improvements for, for water. And then lastly, we have our trust and agency accounts, collected a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in those accounts, expended almost fifteen thousand dollars on the Highway forty-one and Main roundabout, leaving an ending cash balance of about two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And we've identified some various funding sources for those, primarily the forty, Highway forty-one's interchange, and then the master plan projects for One Water. So if they have any questions, we're happy to answer those.
Okay, great, thanks, Jen. Red, no questions, start off?
No, I asked some questions at the previous meeting, and Jennifer answered those questions, so I don't have any more questions.
Okay. Matt? John? Marla?
I had my questions answered also previously, so none at this point.
Okay. Hey, Jen, as far as, so this is the first time we've had a report of this depth and detail. Will this report come back at the budget, during the budget discussion, we have something intertwined into that that will have this level of detail to help us? Specifically, when you, when we look at community impact, development impact fees, and now we've got, we've had an accumulation in there that's carried over a couple of years now, and this actually identifies and allocates funds in the areas in which we can use that. So can you explain how we might see this in the next fiscal year budget cycle?
Sure. So annually, before December thirty-first of each year, you'll receive this report that you have in front of you in terms of budget development during the study sessions as we are identifying, identifying capital projects or other projects throughout the year. We would come back with balances in these accounts and proposed use of those. These would be the first funding source for any capital projects so that we make sure we use them within the five-year timeframe. Throughout the year, if council identifies other projects that they wish to prioritize and direct staff to complete, or city staff recommend other projects, we would do a similar action of bringing forth a recommendation with, if any of the, those projects qualify for funding under these impact fees, that would be our first recommendation.
Okay, thanks. And speaking of budget, would we be able to adapt our, the specific budget page for our community impact fees, development impact fees, that itemizes it out in the way that in the staff report, administration fees, police fees, fire fees, et cetera, would be able to do that?
We could add detail into all of the, the impact fee pages in the budget as to what the balances are and what the proposed use of funds are, so it's clear.
So in thinking through, through this and the next fiscal year budget cycle, so, and I'm just going to stick on the community impact fees, the development impact fees, so having them categorized the way they're listed, admin fees, police fees, fires, having them categorized so that you would have a funding recommendation or project recommendation where those, how, where those funds could be allocated, would that be accurate?
Correct. So if we stick with that example, one of the proposed funding sources for administration, the administration fees is the council chambers rehab that we discussed in this budget cycle. We would come back when we have a more clearly defined picture of what that is and recommend that, that balance be applied towards that project. And then in the budget development cycle, if it's a carryforward, we'd be very specific about that funding in both the capital project page and in the government impact fund budget sheet page.
All right, I think that concludes my questions. We'll open it up for public comment, for anybody you'd like to? No? Okay. No public comment at this time? There is somebody over your shoulder, by the way. So at that, all right, so with that, we'll bring it back to council and for discussion. Marla?
Well, I think this is really the first time we've seen this report, and it's a very helpful report because we know we're collecting these fees, and it's very helpful to see how much balance there is in each one. So I appreciate the work that's put in, and I thank you for the effort, and we're accepting it, I guess, tonight, so, thanks. Receiving and filing.
Ditto. Thank you.
All right, Matt? I definitely concur. It's very clear, and I can even make sense of it, so thank you.
And I agree as well, but as the mayor talked about, this is something that would be very helpful to us as we develop our budget for next fiscal year. I know that as we went through this year's budget, we looked, I was kind of surprised to find that we had some of these funds available, like for the playground equipment and the bocce ball. And so now we know we have some kind of unexpected funds available, and that, so it would really be helpful to have that be part of the budget development. So I concur with staff recommendation to receive and file.
And I would echo the comments of my colleagues and accept this report for, as given by staff, and just thank you for the work. It's very detailed, and look forward to being able to utilize this in the future. And are there any other comments from staff on this? None? Okay, we're good. So Item C four is concluded, and now we get to a declaration of future agenda items.
All right, I'm ready.
We did, but we-
I have to add my one now.
Yeah.
Yeah. I am asking that we agendize, I will come back at the twelve-eleven meeting with the results of my research as to whether or not it's feasible to proceed with a grant application, and if so, the concept of that grant application. So it needs to be done on the twelve-eleven meeting. Yep.
So what's the, what's the future agenda item?
A recommendation to pro, to apply for a grant for the heat program.
And so is there any reason why we wouldn't direct staff to do this?
If I may, it's unclear. I think Councilmember McPherson's going to look into it if, if we need council approval, and I think some, in some respects, it depends on the amount we're requesting. If it exceeds the city manager's, you know, approval authorization level of a hundred twenty-five thousand, that might be part of it, or they might need a city council resolution to accompany a grant application. We don't know. So we want to at least have that option available, to have the meeting on, agenda item on the eleventh in case council approval is necessary.
Yeah, and the only reason I'm so involved is that I, I'm on both of these committees and councils, and therefore have been interacting with folks and have a better sense of what everybody else is doing and what the requirements are for the grant, et cetera. So I'm happy to do it.
Okay. So future agenda item to bring back a recommendation on the grant application.
Right.
Okay. Can we have consensus on that?
Yep.
Do we want to put that on the, the planned special council meeting at four-thirty or four o'clock, whatever the case may be? We already have one scheduled for the eleventh. Do we want to put it there, or do you want to put it on the regular meeting?
So, so, good point. So this would have to be on the December eleventh meeting to meet the deadline?
Yes.
Yes, one of, either the special meeting or the regular.
I will have no more information in two days than I have right now.
Right, true.
I- I really
Oh, I'm sorry. We, I meant to say, there's a special meeting on December 11th at 4:30 scheduled before the regular city council meeting of December 11th, before you see the new council. So, that's what I meant to clarify.
That would be
So, that December 11th meeting, special meeting at 4:30. Okay.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
And we have, how many items on there now? Three or four?
Fifteen.
How many, 15?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so are we starting at 4:30 or 1:30?
4:30 a.m.
Pardon me?
4:30 a.m.
4:30 a.m. Okay, all right.
I'm kidding. 4:30 p.m. I think we have just two items at this point.
Okay. All right. Okay, so, and we have unanimous consensus on that? Okay, all right, good. And that was for Dana, she's going through that. Anything else on that? I think we've done everything? Good. So, then, our next meeting is a special meeting of the city council scheduled for Thursday, November 29th at 4:30, right here in the Vets Hall. And then our next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, December 11th, at 6 p.m. And should note that we're going to have a special meeting also Tuesday, December 11th, at 4:30. So, that's that, and we can adjourn the meeting. All right, thank you.